Ladies and gentlemen, please take your seats, please take your seats. We're going to start with our pre-council proclamations. All right. At this time, could I please get representatives from Toth and Iris to the table up front? The table right here in front, we're gonna have you all sit down. I just have a seat. Don't worry, we're not, it's not Congress, we're not gonna make you swear on a Bible or ask you questions. First, I would like to begin by thanking y'all for being here today. We really appreciate it. We know it's not easy to come to City Hall for anything or find parking or get in the building. We appreciate you going through the effort. Today is really just an opportunity and effort of this council to celebrate y'all for what you do for the city. I'd like to start with Toth. You guys were established in 1947, first fifty members and five floats. Now's where twenty-five-hundred riders and fifty floats. You're known as the Parade of Shut-Ins.
Yes, sir.
The group of, okay, well, you know what, I'm not gonna read this. I'm going to have you guys tell us about, before you do that, I want to say something very personal to me. My wife began her career as a pediatric oncology nurse at Children's Hospital. And what you do for those kids is absolutely amazing.
Thank you.
I mean, these are children who by no agency of their own cannot participate in Mardi Gras. And the fact that you guys make the effort to bring Mardi Gras to them is something that really makes them feel like they can live a normal life. And I really want to thank y'all, in particular for the fact that despite all of these stupid and ridiculous obstacles the city has put in front of y'all from going back to your mission, you have fought every single day to get back to those kids. So tell us some stuff about Toth, but I really want to put that out there because I think it would be a tremendous disservice for us not to say how hard you guys fought every single year against the city that always had excuses why you couldn't get to those kids.
Well, councilman, we continued to, even though we had our struggles with our route, we continue to participate in a charity walk to every institute in that institution, in that area. Along Carrollton, Henry Clay, Chappatoulis, we visit those places personally with about a hundred members. We walk in there, we greet, we shake hands, and we meet, and we contribute to those organizations in all kinds of aspects, you know, and the guys, the crew members truly enjoy that. They get a firsthand view of these people that can't get out on the street and actually enjoy Mardi Gras. And then from, as you mentioned, our history, we started in 1947 is the shut-ins. Originally, we didn't even come downtown at all at our route. We stayed as a neighborhood parade. We started parading downtown, I guess you can say, through the mayor's office when he Gally Hall was built, and they wanted us to parade in front of Gally Hall. We totally enjoyed it. We over twenty-two-hundred members strong. We have charitable events throughout the year, and all that money's go into the community, go into those institutions and other places that need it. And I have some board members with me and some executive committees. And we are grateful to the council, you and all the other council members, the sheriff's office, Susan Hudson, the mayor's office, and all the other municipalities that giving this our route back, which means a lot to us, truly. You know, we're gonna parade Sunday, probably seventy-five years.
I want to add one thing, because I was talking to Doug McCash, and it really tells everyone how much the other crews respect Toth. As you know, back in November, Oceanos in Mid-City offered to change their routes when the routes were cut, just to get your route back.
Right.
And when I told Doug that, he was completely floored. He was like, wait, I said, they were gonna cut the end of their routes just to get Toth back to children, because everyone in Mardi Gras knows how important it is you get to those kids.
And we appreciate that. As an organization, we really appreciate all the help that everybody gave us to get back to what we got. You know, we are, like I said, we truly enjoy passing in front of those institutions, getting them, seeing them kids. If you ask anybody that has unfortunate family member in there, and they'll tell you that we come every day, every year, ten days before our parade, we march in front of there, inside, we go inside, meet them, give them beads, give them the blooms, hug them. It touches us in our heart. And we appreciate it. We appreciate all, everybody's help. Like I said, y'all help, gratefully help the sheriff's office, the mayor's office, and all the surrounding municipalities, sanitation, everybody that helped us get us back our route. And our friends in Carnival. We appreciate their help also.
Thank you. Is there anything else you guys want to add before we go to Iris? I think he, I think he said it best.
He did.
Any customers want to comment before we go to Iris? Okay, Mr. Green.
I just want to comment about Toth. I appreciate you all and what you do. Part of my tradition, which I had to change a little bit because I'm on the council and a couple other things, was going to my sister-in-law's house on Robert Street and spending the day. Everybody in the neighborhood celebrated, looking forward to walking over to Magazine Street to have a good time for the entire day, and then interestingly enough, walking from where they were down to Napoleon, you know, because that's where it was all part of a tradition. And I just appreciate the fact that you all are not only part of a tradition, because a lot of people look on the outside and they say tradition, but that you also are reaching into the community and doing great things at Children's Hospital, you know. A lot of people in the Uptown area are more familiar than other areas are with Children's Hospital, and they really talk about and appreciate the fact that you reach out and make sure that those children and the administrators are feeling happy at the times, you know, which sometimes you can feel sad about with children in a hospital, you know, so, but thank you very much, and I look forward to kind of maybe after my council days, getting back into that tradition, at least every other year of going to Robert Street, waiting, walking down, and enjoying Toth at that location. But thanks for everything that you do to make Carnival and Mardi Gras what it is, and thanks for what you do for the community too.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next up, we have Iris. Latest and greatest, a lot the latest, to be clear, Iris was established in nineteen-seventeen as the oldest all-female crew in the city of New Orleans, currently with thirty-four-hundred active members. And I would love for you to tell the story about how the sunglasses happened, but I would be remiss, and my staff put it here in bold. My wife is riding an Iris this year, and she's one of those super procrastinators that is currently decorating, still decorating sunglasses.
Right.
So she's putting the work in, but I think it would be a great, obviously, we'd like to hear more about your organization, but the sunglasses, the whole story of the sunglasses is really cool, so I think it'd be great to share that.
Well, it started with everyone having some signature throw, and we had one member say, it's always sunny on Iris Saturday. Let's do sunglasses. And so we started the whole tradition of doing the Iris sunglasses. We have sunglass parties, all the all the, you know, different floats get together and decorate them, and it's a cherished throw by the spectators that come to the parade. But as you know, we were formed in nineteen-seventeen, we're a hundred and six years old this year. And not only the oldest, but now the overall largest in the city with three thousand six hundred and sixty-four members. So we'll hit the streets and start the whole Mardi Gras weekend off at eleven o'clock, and we appreciate today being recognized by the city.
Thank you. You guys look really good for a hundred and six. Councilmember Moreno.
Thank you. I'll start with Iris, and then I'll wrap up with Toth. Congratulations on a hundred and six years. You are, I've got two, well, I guess I don't want to say favorites, but two of my top ones that I love to go to are Iris and Fenn Fatale. And they're two, both of them are afternoon or morning and afternoon parades, and I love those so much because both of them celebrate women. And I think that it's so extraordinary that you've been doing this for more than a hundred years, and your crew has continued to grow and grow. And so I just say to you all, keep doing what you're doing, and I look forward to continuing to support you all, and I look forward to seeing you on the parade route. When it comes to Toth, you all are an amazing group that really is about community and about neighborhoods. And, you know, when your route was changed, I can tell you that my stepchildren were devastated because you were, you were the parade that they could just like walk, you know, just a couple of blocks down and be able to watch you all and celebrate with you all. They didn't have to go through the big ordeal of having to come downtown or trying to find a spot on the route, like you went like right near their houses. And then, of course, what we've already mentioned, the Children's Hospital aspect, which was so important. I know it was mentioned a little bit ago, but when myself and Councilmember Harris met with members of the Mardi Gras council, this is before, you know, the whole plan on, on bringing back the original routes and the whole plan on upping security came about, I can tell you that there were several crews that said, what if we just got Toth back to their original route? What could we, as other crews, do to help Toth, just Toth, get back to their original route? And obviously, because your route is one of the longest, I think it is the longest, that there were additional challenges, but they were willing to give up whether it was financially to help support for additional policing, give up on parts of their routes, whatever it took to help you all because of the impact that you have on neighborhoods and the impact that you have on the children and the families of Children's Hospital. So I'm just so glad that everything was able to work out. You're back on your original route. It's gonna be great to see you all back where you belong. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Green.
I've said my thanks to Toth, and I want to say thanks to Iris. Thanks, you all are a part of making New Orleans a very special place. And a hundred and six years is pretty significant. So that's great to all of the members. Thank you all for being a part of this continuing tradition, and I'm pleased to be here to celebrate the one hundred and sixth and look forward to those numbers growing every year. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And in closing to Iris, I will say, I did ask my wife for a pair of sunglasses. She told me I had to work for it. So I'll be out there on Saturday, probably fighting off people trying to get a pair of sunglasses. So thank y'all so much for being down here. We're gonna come down here and bring these proclamations to you and take some pictures, and then that'll be that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, please take your seats, please take your seats. Please take your seats so we can get started. Madam Clerk.
Roll call. Councilmember Thomas, Councilmember Green, Councilmember Morel, Councilmember Moreno, Councilmember King, Councilmember Harris, Councilmember Jerusso. We have five members. We have a quorum.
Thank you. The invocation today will be done by Pastor Aubrey Wallace. Everyone, please stand if you're able.
Good morning. Let us bow. Return and up, bless you, Godfather. We thank you for this day. We thank you, God, for the privilege and opportunity to serve. I actually look upon this entire council, oh God, and every member that sets upon this council, oh God. We thank God for the compassion that they rule with, the desire that they rule with, oh God, to see that this city would be a great city. God, we know we have a lot of problems, but we know, God, you are a problem solver. We know, God, that you are God of another chance. We ask God mercy upon this city as we gather now in this chamber, oh God. We ask you, oh God, to give us the right temperament, the right compassion and love and understanding, even if we disagree with others. Let us disagree, disagree with them. God, we actually look upon this city as we embark upon this parade season, at the close of this season. Bless everyone that is a part of the parade season, every organization that is going out. Let the safety net be upon this city, oh God. Bless our officers, bless our first responders, bless those that even pick up the trash, Lord. God, we thank you for being so good. Thank you for blessing us, oh God, giving us a chance to be a part of something that is great in this life, oh God. And Lord, let us always have the compassion and the love for others, oh God. In the name of Jesus, we ask this. Amen.
Councilmember Green will do the pledge allegiance. Madam Clerk, before we get started, I'd like to also thank Pastor Wallace for pinch hitting and becoming our last Madam Clerk, before we get started, I'd like to also thank Pastor Wallace for pinch hitting and becoming our last minute invocation presenter. Thank you very much, Pastor Wallace. Madam Clerk.
We have special orders of business. The first order of business is a presentation. Laverne Toomes, Vice President of Development for the American Heart Association, New Orleans Market. Recognizing the American Heart Association for their work helping people live longer, healthier lives in honor of Heart Month 2023.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, I'd like to welcome the folks here from the American Heart Association. If you can make your way to the table. So today, we will be proclaiming February as American Heart Month 2023. To bring increased awareness to the risk that cardiovascular disease poses to men, women, and children of every age and race in the United States. From 2019 to 2020, deaths from heart disease increased by 4.8%, the largest increase in heart disease deaths since 2012. And stroke deaths increased in the same period by 6% with cardiovascular disease continuing to be the leading cause of death in the country. And while it is critical, everyone is aware of the risks posed, cardiovascular diseases are the number one killer in women in our, in the United States. Killing women more than forms of cancer, all forms of cancer combined. Women, especially Black and Hispanic women, are disproportionately impacted by heart disease and stroke. And research shows heart attacks are on the rise in younger women as well. So with that being said, certainly awareness is key and understanding the symptoms and changes in your, in your overall health. That could potentially be your heart that's telling you that something needs to be checked out and to get it checked out now. So with that, I want to turn it over to you all. Sharonda, if you want to introduce everyone who is with you.
You're working everybody, Sharonda. I am honored to chair the Go Red for Women campaign this year for the American Heart Association. Now let everyone else introduce themselves.
I'm Nicole Silos and I am the Go Red for Women Director of the American Heart Association.
Chelsea Morgan, Community Impact Vice President.
Well, thank you all so much. Tell me a little bit about the Go Red event and why that's so important on raising.
So again, you highlighted most of the points about why that's so important. I am really honored to chair this event because again, heart disease is the number one killer in women. People don't really think that, it's not intuitive because we hear so much about other types of things like breast cancer, but it really is heart health. And I personally have been affected in my family, I've had two grandmothers who suffered strokes. And I've got friends and other important people in my life who have had these effects, a lot of strokes and things that are happening. And it's happening in people who are younger and younger every day. And it's really hard for us in the city of New Orleans, particularly at this time of year when we're all out enjoying kinds of fried chicken and king cake and having our beverages. And so we.
Lifestyle is impacting our health and so I'm really thankful that you all are taking the opportunity to recognize the work that the American Heart Association is doing today.
Can you all talk about kind of the differences and symptoms that women may experience versus men? Because you know, we always hear it's, you know, often about the chest pains, right? But women can experience different symptoms and I think it's so important that women recognize that. So that if they're feeling those, they're not like, oh, you know, it's just maybe a stomach ache or it's just this or it's just, but it's, it could actually be your heart.
Yeah, I would say that's definitely true. One of the things you mentioned was, is your stomach, like nauseous, being nauseous is something that people may think, well, you know, something's just wrong. I might have eaten the wrong thing, but that could be a symptom or something else going on with your heart. We also sometimes hear about jaw pain being another thing and maybe kind of going down your neck. Another common one that I hear about a lot and that we learned about. Those are two things.
It is often misdiagnosed as a panic attack when you're having a heart attack in women, which is very scary.
Really, that I had not heard about. Well, then that goes to, you know, having additional training within hospitals, you would think, you know, so that those, those things are not characterized incorrectly. Any questions from the DAS? Anyone wants to talk about recognizing, you know, the importance of awareness of heart disease?
Yeah, not so much, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Not so much a question, but just to say, um, I appreciate the fact that you all are focused on an issue that is of grave importance to, you know, not only our community, but actually throughout the world. I mean, people kind of take for granted the heart, they, um, you know, I know we don't, many times it's hard to watch the diet, but it shouldn't be so hard to watch the diet. But anybody who has seen someone go through hospitalization or constant care because of heart conditions recognizes how important it is that you all are doing the work that you do, so thank you. And as a community, we should do our best to focus on, in addition to having the great times that we have in a great city. Such as we have also the long-term implications of some of the things that we do, if we consistently do it. I think everybody will agree there are certainly opportunities where you may break your diet or break your routine or something like that. But it shouldn't be every day. And it gets harder in society every day because, for example, you can get a two-piece fried chicken special for the cost of two oranges. And it makes it a really big challenge in society, but let's think long-term, let's think of longevity and good health and, um, focus on the issues that you all are bringing forth and I thank you for being here today.
Councilmember Morel.
Thank you, I'll kind of want to echo some of the comments that you guys have made as well as Council Vice President Moreno. I think it's important though, when you have the dialogue, when the dialogue's being held nationally about what to look for when you're having a heart attack. It is obvious it's driven by symptoms that men have because, and it's, it's, it's important that we give equal attention and we give equal opportunity to educate to those symptoms that are unique to women. Because we've seen bias in medicine for generations and it is very, as someone who has also had heart health complications in my family, it's very upsetting to think about that when that kind of misconception is so prevalent, doctors are also kind of just as likely to fall for it. And if people are properly educated and you're there as the, as the woman who's having the heart attack or her family members, it could save their life just to push and say, no, well, this is seri-, it, it looks like heartburn, but it could be a heart attack, you need to check that too. Because oftentimes, I mean, we all love and respect our doctors, but when a doctor makes their first diagnosis, they tend to zealously stick to it. And it's important to be an advocate for yourself and if something doesn't seem right and you've been properly educated on what a heart health condition could be, we need to make sure everyone's able to advocate for themselves with that information. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Harris.
So I, you know, I'd just like to point out that women often take care of their children, their partners, their careers, their jobs, and don't look after themselves. I was diagnosed with high blood pressure because my dentist randomly took my, took my vital signs, which is so crazy. So I take my little pill every morning and you know, I think it's important that women be mindful of themselves and just do a check-in daily. Just take that moment to check in with themselves, try to push everything else aside and really think about themselves and to be mindful of everything. So thank you for all that you do. Thank you for championing women's heart health, Sharonda, and I think this is a great event.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Jeruso.
I, I think I'll just reiterate almost at the end of last, um, you know, look, my, my, our family has heart, I mean, I think so many do, heart history. And I know my mom particularly, as her estrogen levels started going down, that's when heart problems become so much more significant. And so I think it's a good message and, and I know we say this a lot, like a lot of times the information is out there, but repeating it is really important. And, and probably unset is, is like, there is a real focus on breast cancer awareness with women's. Sometimes heart awareness does not get as much of the attention as it deserves, so I just want to thank you all for contributing.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Jeruso. So before I read the proclamation, I just wanted to highlight an event coming up on Saturday, February 25th. That is the 13th Back to Nature Annual Heart Walk. It is at Joe Brown Memorial Park. It starts at nine AM. So if you're looking to get healthy and, and right after Mardi Gras, you know, get, get your fitness started again or just keep it going. The Heart Walk is a, is a good place to go. So once again, that's on the 25th at Joe Brown Park at nine AM.
Councilmember, could I also note that the Go Red for Women luncheon will also be held on March 3rd at the Marriott and tickets are still available if people want to come and support that event. So if you are able to attend.
What's the website where you can go and get?
It is neworleansgoredotheart.org.
Perfect, got it. And so the proclamation reads, we are proclaimed by the city of New Orleans that the council urges all citizens to show their support for the fight against heart disease by commemorating this month as American Heart Month. By increasing awareness, speaking out about heart disease and empowering others to reduce their risk, we can save thousands of lives each year. Thank you all so much for what you do and it's signed by all seven members of the city council.
Thank you.
We'll come down and take a photo. Wait, we gotta go. So swish. I think it's Iris. It's Marty Crutcher. One more, this phone. Okay, we're good.
Are we ready to do the second order? The second order of business is a presentation, the Living School presentation honorees, Patrick Livers, Rio Valdez, Brian Coleman, Charles Corpenning, music production teacher, Upbeat Academy, Stefan Pasternak, principal, Ashana Windsor, teacher. Recognizing the Living School music production students for their salute to Black History Month.
All right, y'all, come on up. You can come to, to the, to the big table up here.
This is.
Chairman Parker, do you want to come up too? All right, so as you all are getting settled, let me, let me explain a little bit about, about this group of really talented individuals from their teachers to of course, the, the, the young performers and sure, Mr. Parker, you're pretty talented too. So, so Mr. Stefan Pasternak, he's the CEO and superintendent of, of the Living School. And Charles Corpenning, he teaches music production on behalf of Upbeat Academy at the Living School. Now, three of his students, and, and they were named in the, in the introduction, is it, is it Livers or Livers?
Livers.
Livers, Patrick Livers, Rio Valdez, and Byron Coleman were invited to perform an original song entitled Black History Freestyle for Black History Month on Good Morning America in Times Square in New York City. So, oh my gosh, like what an amazing invitation, right there, I think, to give you a round of applause, okay? All right, here's the unfortunate part and why we're so glad to celebrate them here and to boost their profile here. Because unfortunately, they were then told by the staff at Good Morning America that a VIP performer needed to change his schedule appearance date and that because of that, these young men's performance had to be canceled. So our students were diligently preparing a song and really, of course, I'm sure you guys took the news hard. So our young folks are now doing their very best to, you know, make sure that they, they promote their music, that they promote themselves and we want to do the very same. We want to celebrate your talent and that's why we have you here before us at the city council along with the Chair of the Orleans Parish School Board. So, look, I, I want to hear from you all and then we can talk to them as well about the other thing that we've got coming up for you all, your little TV appearance that we were able to get for you all. But in the meantime, introduce yourselves, tell us about yourselves. I know you've got a little performance for us as well and I'll let the, the council members weigh in. Whoever wants to start can go ahead.
Hello, everyone, my name is Charles Corpenning, I'm the Program Director at Upbeat Academy along with our lead instructor Evan Thibodeau. We have been fortunate enough to be work, to work in concert with Living School for about three years now since the fall of 2020. And I've worked with Patrick Livers since the first class, he's one of our first students at Living School. We've been really fortunate to cultivate a really healthy and holistic homemade grown studio at Living School. The students built their own recording booth, helped assemble the studio. And really have gotten to a point with the help of all the instructors that are up here to cultivate their talent. So when they were given the opportunity to head to New York, it was all based on the fact that they were fortunate enough to perform at the Lunafay Light Festival, uh, this past December, someone saw the performance and sent a clip to one of the producers at ABC and said, these, these students are really talented and we want to see them do well. And, um, we're also fortunate enough to work with the Travis Hill School at, um, that's based in OJC and in JGI C. So I've, I'm able to see with our own work, uh, what this music is able to do and, and really help our students. And we're in a point right now in the city where our young folks need something to help them to continue on a path that is beneficial to them. So, um, I just want to celebrate them and thank them for being here today and thank everyone for allowing us to celebrate these young men.
How you doing, everyone? My name is Patrick Livers. Uh, I'm a currently, I'm a senior, I'm the founder student at Living School, I've been there since day one. So I didn't see the ups and downs and I can say like, my school is really unique and different. Like, based on what Mr. Charlie was saying, like with music, like I told my school I wanted to rap and they was like, all right, let's put a studio on our school. So they put a studio on our school and like anything I wanted to do based on like being a young entrepreneur, businessman, anything I want to do, they supported, like. It's been since, I'd say since October, I made a business move with my school. And I told them, I said, you know what, we need a vending machine and they allowed me to put a vending machine inside my school. So I appreciate them for all the things they allow me to do.
Hi, my name is Rio Valdez, go by the stage name EP Rio. This is my first year at Living School, I originally came from Benjamin Franklin. And I'm able to say it has been a good experience, I've gotten a lot of opportunities like this going on right now as compared to my original school. I came in already trying to establish myself as an artist and they just helped me lift myself further in that way.
Good morning, council, my name is Evan Thibodeau. I am born and raised in New Orleans and, um, I just want to reiterate off of what Mr. Charles said of how important it is for us to have opportunities for the, the youth to actually expand. I know when I was growing up in the city, we actually had playgrounds, we had a lot of extracurricular things that we had access to that there's not a lot of access to nowadays. And these, these kids can be an example of when you put time into what the interests of the youth is, it, it has positive results. And, um, you know, watching them grow and get the opportunities, there's no mistake, you know, the God's going to work in the way that God works and these kids are so talented that they're showing what we can do with this city and what we can do when we put our resources into the youth. So, thank you. So thank you for your time.
Good morning, everybody. My name is Stefan Pasternak. I'm blessed to be the CEO of Living School as Councilmember Moreno said. You know, as Patrick shared with you, he's one of our founding students. We're only in our fourth year as a school. So we're one of the newest high schools, public high schools in the city of New Orleans. And we've been trying to build a space that is about the health and wellbeing of young people, community and environment. And the work you're going to behold today is, I think, a testament to that, how we have some of the most brilliant young people in the world, not just at Living School, but around the city, who given the right opportunities to learn by doing and lead by doing are building beautiful things. And, you know, I'm going to brag on these two young kings for a second. Patrick over here has been accepted to Clark University next year. Clark Atlanta University, yeah, Clark Atlanta. Amongst many other pursuits that he's pursuing for the next step in his life and has literally, like he said, built one of the, the most progressive high schools in the city from day one as a leader in so many facets. And Rio's only been with us for just over a semester, but already Rio has helped us launch a 3D printing program that's interdisciplinary across disciplines, along with his artistic pursuits and his entrepreneurial pursuits. And so it's young people like these given the opportunities to learn by doing that are building beautiful things, not just for themselves, but for all of us. So really excited to, to share their beautiful work with you all today and thank you guys for honoring, honoring the space.
Counsel, it's wonderful to be back. I just wanted to first acknowledge my colleague, board member Leela Eames, who is the, not only the board member for Living School, but also the grandparent of a Living School student. I also just wanted to thank you for continuing to honor and uplift our students and our educators in the city as a council. It's incredibly important to tell these positive stories about these incredible students. And Patrick and Rio, y'all are just, just making my day, just thinking about what you're able to do at your school. I thank you for your talent and your drive and your commitment, commitment to your school. I want to highlight a couple of the things about the school. And so it was mentioned that their carpentry program built the recording studio. They also have a video production program and a green screen in that same studio. There is an orchard at the school. They have 12 students who are currently in Japan. They have dual enrollment programs for their cities as well. So there's really wonderful stuff going out off Bullard Avenue at the Living School. And I'm, as the representative of the Orleans Parish School Board, I'm just so proud of the work that is being done by Mr. Pasternak and his whole team. And I do want to acknowledge that that school, the dream for Living School started, I believe, in 2012. And, you know, hundreds of people were involved in the creation of that school, community members, students, families, and, you know, we're just very proud of everything that's going on, on your campus. And, and thank you again, council, for honoring these, these young students.
Thank you. Okay, so from what I understand, you guys have a little bit of a performance for us?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Black History Freestyle that we didn't get to perform in Good Morning America. We're going to start off acapella. We don't have the beat with us today, unfortunately. Shout out to Malcolm, shout out to Harriet, know that they paid the way for our cherry. Shout out to brothers, shout out to sisters, shout out to ones who was right there with us. Hey, shout them out. Hey, shout out to Kendrick, shout out to Cole, leading our age, they playing their role, taking the lessons from all the grace, learning their skills and how to play. Crazy we live in this weather we made. Shout out to leaders and teachers and greats. Hey, hey, shout out to ones that got love for us. Know all the struggle, get through with us. Hey, and shout out to the kings and queens outside, straight to this path, you know, where is our God? They shout them out. Shout out to Master P. I feel like he said the way. I'm a young entrepreneur, grinding, trying to see better days. All right, my bad, my bad. I'm a little nervous, my bad. Shout out to Master P. I feel like he said the way. I'm a young entrepreneur, grinding, trying to see better days, trying to be big like MLK, because I got a dream too. They wasn't expecting us to win, but that's what intelligence do. Stay dedicated and boss my move, put a machine inside my school. I'm just know what I gotta do. So I can get this revenue, hand it along way from the avenue. If I can do it, you can do it too. Mama proud she ain't raise no fool. If I can do it, you can do it too. Thank y'all.
Okay, you guys are amazing. So, you know, what we've been talking about and, and Councilmember Thomas, he wanted to be here. I know that he invited you all to, to be here with us. He had to run out something, but he's hoping to be back soon. But, you know, we wanted to really come here and celebrate you all and also elevate you and amplify your talents. And so when, when we were talking earlier, we said, you know, what, what about like potentially getting you all on a morning show, getting you on TV? And fortunately, it sounds like you guys are now going to be on the WWL TV Morning Show. So congratulations. After Marty, I look forward to seeing you on the morning show. So with that, let me turn it over to my council colleagues. I'll just take it up from one end to the next. Councilmember Green.
Yes, thank you all very much for being here today and it's an honor for me to be here to celebrate with you all. I know a bit, only a bit about the Living School, but I guess it's good to see students at the Living School and administrators and the school board members. I appreciate the work that you all do. You're just a personification of the fact that there is a lot of positive going on with our youth. We hear so much negative, but there's nothing like raising a couple of youths as I've done, a couple of young black men in our city to know that our city can be one of opportunity too, in the midst of the negativity. You all are an example of the opportunity and I certainly look forward to you all sharing with us when we can get your message more, whether it be on a television show or whether it be at some activity or sending us copies of whatever you might do that we can share with our members of the community. But the most important thing to me is that you all are the example, the personification of positive in our city amongst our youth. Continue to do the positive things that you do. And as you go out and you talk to a lot of people, especially the young people of New Orleans, the young people who you know, just impart on them that the fact is we have a lot of good here. We have a lot of good. We have a lot of talent. You all are an example of the talent. We have a lot going on that's good in our schools that needs to be celebrated as you're celebrating with your work at the Living School. So thank you. Again, it's an honor for me to be here today and I look forward to watching you all as your careers rise, but also as you continue to do positive things in our community.
Appreciate it.
Council President Morrell.
I had the fortune of growing up in a household with a principal educator as my mother at McDonald 50 in the French Quarter, which is now Homer Plessy. And I had the benefit, though I was not as musical, well, say I was, I'm not as musically talented as y'all would be still a disservice to y'all. So I'll just say I'm not musical talented at all. And I had the fortune of having great musicians who are teachers who were able to steer me off that course fairly quickly. Looking at what y'all have done, looking at the performance you gave us today, we need to do more in this city to foster talent and provide you with every opportunity and every resource to be successful because you guys are the future of the city. So whatever this council can do to be assistance and help you, we're here for you.
Appreciate that. Thank you very much for having us.
Councilmember Harris, followed by Jeresa.
It's, it's amazing to see such young, talented young men in front of us. Men who are entrepreneurial in spirit, who are talented. And I just look forward to seeing you thrive in the future. I think you have great things ahead of you and I can't wait to see the WWL broadcast. That's going to be awesome. So congratulations and to the school, I mean, teaching young people to really get their hands into carpentry, to build what they want, to see something that they dream and then actually build it like a recording studio. I mean, that's, that's fantastic. And having that hands-on experience, I, I can't imagine like really thinking through, okay, this is the concept and this is, this is the reality of it. And we need more programs like that frankly, around the city. So again, anything that this council can do to replicate, to get programs like this in other parts of the city, I think is going to be critical. So thank you for, for your leadership as school leaders.
Well, thank you very much for sharing your talent and being here today. I thought you were going to say President Parker was going to lay the beat while y'all were. Can we get another one maybe with him doing, anyway?
Always down for features.
Yeah, that's right. But, but we, we thank you all so much for being here, but I think what President Morrell said is right, like talent is a beautiful thing and it's great to watch, but talent has to be harnessed, shaped and given a space to be able to get better. And so you all have all the raw materials, but thanks to your teachers at the school for being mentoring, providing space for making that happen. And I think we collectively need to make sure that there's as much space as possible, whether it's arts, whether it's in carpentry, anything else that people and kids are interested in to make them thrive is incredibly important. So we appreciate all of your hard work and sharing your talent with us. Thank you.
Appreciate you. Appreciate you.
So on behalf of Councilmember Thomas and the entire city council, we have proclamations for each one of you. We'll go down to the front to take photographs.
Let's do it.
Good morning.
Everyone, please take your seats. We're going on the next item on the agenda.
The third order of business is a presentation, Zulu Social Aid and Pleasure Club honoring the 2023 Zulu Royal Court. We have King-elect Nicholas Nick Spears, Queen-elect Dr. Christie L. Spears, Zulu Big Shot, Terrence D. McGuire, Zulu Witch Doctor, Justin DJ Polo 504 Smith, Zulu Ambassador Harold S. Seals Jr., Zulu Mayor DeSento, Sento Barbian, Zulu Providence Prince, Dr. George E. Ray Jr., Zulu Governor Ernest E. Moncrief Jr., Zulu Mr. Big Stuff Melvin Mel DeBarbara Sampson Jr., honoring the 2023 Zulu Royal Court.
And do they, and do they look great? I am pleased to introduce the 2023 Royal Court with just a couple of comments and thank you very much, Madam Clerk, for reading the names of those distinguished individuals who serving as characters and also serving as leaders within the organization. Today, we celebrate the rich history of the Zulu Social Aid and Pleasure Club, which was founded in 1916. However, interestingly enough, Zulu's first Mardi Gras appearance dates back to 1909. The original members gained inspiration for their costumes from a comedy called There Never Was and Never Will Be A King Like Me, which included a skit about a Zulu tribe. Zulu is the only New Orleans Mardi Gras crew that selects its king through an election voting process, the only one. And this year's king is Nichols, Nicholas Spears, Nicholas Spears, who has been elected to serve as King Zulu-elect for 2023. Mr. Spears is a native of New Orleans, a graduate of Warren Eastern High School, class of 1991. He's a proud owner of SCG Construction Group, an entrepreneur, where he serves as a licensed residential and commercial contractor. Nichols has also been an active member of Zulu since 1998. He's also a member of Omega Psi Phi Paternity Inc. Any other Omegas want to say anything? All right, he's a member. He's also the proud husband of Dr. Christie Lagarde Spears, who is Queen Zulu-elect 2023. Queen Zulu-elect Dr. Christie Lagarde Spears, a New Orleans native and graduated from Xavier University Paratory High School, Xavier Prep, class of 1998. Dr. Spears was awarded a Doctor of Philosophy from the University of Holy Cross, where her research examined the therapeutic impact of dance movements on African-American adolescents' behavior. She's a proud member of Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority, Inc., AKA is in the house and all over the place this evening. How about that? Now, just for the fact that we're on public notice, I want to alert the public to the fact that the Zulu Coronation Ball will be held tomorrow, Friday, at the New Orleans Ernest and Montreal Convention Center with musical performances by Anthony Hamilton Lloyd and Midnight Star. The George V. Rainey Zulu Lundig draw festival will be held at the Audubon Waldenberg Riverfront Park on Monday at 10:00. And of course, the main event, the Zulu Social Aid and Pleasure Club Parade will roll on Fat Tuesday, 8:30, starting at the corner of Jackson and Clayborne. I'd just like to add that as a representative, as the representative on the council for District D, I am so pleased and so proud to represent this district, which includes the Zulu Social Aid and Pleasure Club. All throughout the district, all throughout our city, members of the club are doing great things to enhance the quality of life in our city, in education, in politics, in medicine, in other fact, in all the capacities. So in addition to saying thank you for being who you are, thank you for all that you do to make our community a better one. I am so pleased to have the opportunity to attend as many events as I can, whether it be a flag raising, whether it be a party, whether it be the keep up with that, right? How do you do it, Brother Robertson? How do you do it? It's a great, it's a great thing that the people are so motivated to come together because of they are doing a positive thing for our city and the socialization is so important to our city. So as we celebrate today, we celebrate and I also say thank you for all that you do. And what I'm going to do is turn over, and we'll come back to the council for comments from the deists. I'm going to turn it over to Brother Robertson, if you have any comments or Brother Rainey or historian. Thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Green. Madam President, the members of the council, I'm Clarence Beck, now the council historian and Director of Public Relations. And it's always a pleasure that we come before you every year to present to you and And it's always a pleasure that we come before you every year to present to you and the city of New Orleans, our royalty for twenty twenty-three. Uh, we're looking for a great day, Mardi Gras day. And the more most important thing is that we represent the city of New Orleans. And we want to thank you for your continued support, uh, and continue that that relationship we have with with New Orleans and continue it every year. Our president is unable to be here with us today, but however, we do have our vice president who's going to speak on his behalf. So I would like to turn the mic over now to Carmen Garrett, who's our Vice President of the Zulu Social Aid and Pleasure Club Incorporated.
Thank you, Brother Becknell. Good morning. Good morning. Again, my name is Carmen Garrett, and I'm the Vice President for the Zulu Social Aid and Pleasure Club. And what I want to do this morning is give thanks to the City Council from the eight hundred plus members that we do have in an organization. Throughout all of my endeavors, we can always count on this City Council to support us whatever we do. This is one weekend, this is our weekend that's coming up right now. It's things that we work for throughout the year. Tomorrow, we have our coronation ball. Monday, we have our Lundigra, and Tuesday, we're going to have our parade. And I want to encourage everyone on the City Council, if you can't make all of them, pick the event that you want to come to because we're looking forward to this, and this is going to be one of our greatest seasons. So thank you for supporting us. And we always want to say thank you, thank you, thank you.
Hey, thank you, uh, Mr. Carmen. But now here from our vice, from our Chairman of Board, Oscar Rainey.
Good morning, Brother Becknell. Thank you for that. Uh, and first of all, I'd like to thank Councilmember at Large Morel, Councilmember at Large Moreno for your leadership. Thank you for what you guys have done for the city as a whole, but more importantly, for each and every one of you council members that sit on the districts. Just to say thank you from District A to District E, uh, this weekend, we will touch several of the districts with the parade, starting up at Jackson and Clayborne, uh, the Lundigra Festival, all that you do with the support that you give the Zulu Associate Pleasure Club. We're not just a Mardi Gras organization, we're an organization that contributes to the community. And those things that we contribute to the community, we could not do without the support of this council. So once again, thank you for the support that you've given Zulu over the years and that you will continue to give us moving forward. So thank you very much. Hail Zulu.
Hail Zulu.
Okay, thank you, uh, Mr. Rainey. And now I'd like to introduce the same, you will probably know him from the previous years. Uh, the guy who's responsible for all of these instances will, so if you have any complaints, don't call me, call him. Because he's the one that's in charge of all of that, the parade, the ball, everything that goes having to do with Mardi Gras. This guy has some of his hands in, and he's the leader of all of those activities. So I'd like to introduce you all. Mr. Dennis Robertson, who's our Chairman of Carnival Activities.
Good morning. Thank you, Mr. Becknell. Thank you, Council, for having us here this morning. It's always an honor and a privilege to come before you this morning to bring to you part of our Royal Court for twenty twenty-three. Uh, I will introduce to you our King-elect and our characters. Uh, but first and foremost, what I would do is introduce our King-elect, and he will present to you his queen. So first and foremost, my Zulu brother, twenty twenty-three King-elect Nicholas Nick Spears for twenty twenty-three.
Good morning, everyone. So good to be here, uh, on this morning. I had breakfast upstairs. I tell you, it's been a action-packed day and week, as a matter of fact, leading up to Carnival. But I echo so many comments that's been said already about leadership of this organization and when the support that we get from the City Council. I see so many friends up there that I'm familiar with, Councilman King, Councilman Thomas, Councilman Green, as you all know, and and Morel and and Councilman at Large. Uh, it just gives us great pleasure to sit here before you. It's no stranger what Zulu is to the community, but we could not do what we do without your support. So we say thank you on this morning, and we look forward to tomorrow evening, if you're able to come, and I'm sure I'll see some of your faces at the coronation when we officially crown King Zulu. So with that, we say thank you, and we thank you for your continued partnership in this city as we do what we do. Showcase what I call the soul of Mardi Gras, the Zulu Associate Pleasure Club. Thank you. And I will be remiss. I'm getting kicked under the table, y'all. If I did not introduce, uh, my lovely wife, uh, Queen Zulu Select for this year, two thousand twenty-three, Dr. Crystal LaGuard Spears.
Done a great job. Good morning, everyone. Is it, we're excited to be here. I'm, I'm happy to share this experience with you all. I just want to publicly thank you for the great work that you all have been doing throughout this time. We're excited to be here. We're happy that you all are there, sitting up there, assisting us throughout this journey and recognizing us. It's been a true honor to be selected as Queen Select for this year by the Zulu Associate and Pleasure Club, and we look forward to a happy Mardi Gras. Hail Zulu.
Hail Zulu. Hail Zulu.
Also, we brought our characters for this year for twenty twenty-three. First up, we have our Zulu Big Shot, twenty twenty-three, Brother Terrence D. McGuire.
Good morning, Council. Again, as, uh, the chairman stated, I am Terrence McGuire. I'm the big shot. But what makes me uniquely different is this season, I'm the notorious big shot for twenty twenty-three. Big shot. I, I look forward to seeing you all on the route. Um, I'm my float number sixteen A and B. And all you got to do is just say, hey, big shot, throw me something, and I'll take care of you. That's for sure. Happy Mardi Gras and all hail Zulu.
Hail Zulu.
Uh, next up, we have our Zulu Witch Doctor, Brother Justin DJ Polo five oh four Smith, Witch Doctor for twenty twenty-three.
Good morning. It's a pleasure to be here. I'm in control of the weather, so I see that we're going to have some good weather for this, for this Mardi Gras. My King and Queen, I want to see them shine. I want to see all the costumes shine. And again, thank you for having us here. Hail Zulu.
Hail Zulu.
Uh, next up, we have our Zulu Ambassador, Brother Harris Seals Jr.
Morning, good morning, Council. I want to thank you for having us here. We're looking for exciting Mardi Gras on this season. And thank you for going back to the traditional route. Hail Zulu and happy Mardi Gras.
Next up, I was in the mail for twenty twenty-three, Brother DeSento Barbering.
Good morning. Uh, first I'd like to say thank y'all for having us here, like everybody else saying, but, uh, my float is number nineteen. Hope to see y'all out there. Hail Zulu.
And also our Zulu Province Prince, Brother Dr. George E. Ray Jr.
Good morning, City Council. It's an honor and pleasure to be received by this illustrious City Council today. Um, we thank you for all that you do for us as far as the club, and we're looking forward to having a safe and happy Mardi Gras. Hail Zulu. Happy Mardi Gras.
Hail Zulu.
Twenty twenty-eight, twenty-beat.
All right.
And also Zulu Governor.
Good morning, City Council. And again, we'd like to thank you all for having us here. My name is Ernest E. Moncrief Jr. I'm the governor for the Zulu Social Aid and Pleasure Club twenty twenty-three. Mardi Gras season. Y'all come on out and see me on float number twenty-three and come see the best band in the land.
All righty.
You to give a blessing, uh, in your own way, a prayer for our Zulu Big Stuff who couldn't be with us this morning, uh, his father passed, and we hoping he's recovering the full as, as he need to be. But, uh, Brother Melvin Sampson is our Zulu Big Stuff who couldn't be here this morning. So we want to present, uh, part of our Royal Court for you this morning, and we thank you for having us.
Thank you. Thank you very much for being here. And I'd like to add in terms of your activities, what a beautiful activities place on Sunday. Every year you all honor young women, the Zulu maids, and there were thirty-three this year.
Thirty-six.
Thirty-six, thirty-six. I mean, it was worth being there for every one of them to get presented. And I'm just, it emphasizes the aid, the social aid side of the Zulu Social Aid and Pleasure Club, too. All that you do throughout the year, whether it be toy drives, whether it be scholarships, the other activities that you do just reflects upon the fact that you all are committed to our community, and we appreciate it greatly. So I'm going to start right to left and ask council members to feel free to make comments at this time, and then we'll present, we'll have a photo of all of us at the end.
Uh, first of all, thank you to the royalty, King and Queen Spears. What a great day, uh, with the students at Dillard uh, University yesterday and the seniors from the council on age, and we know, uh, they enjoyed it. To the board, uh, the administrators, Mr. Chairman, uh, thank you guys for always, you know, Z may be the last letter in the alphabet, but Z is the first letter when you talk about our culture. Mardi Gras in the revelry that happens on Fat Tuesday. So and to all of the characters, man, uh, I'm hearing that this, this year's parties were some, some of the most packed and the best ever, and people from all over came out to enjoy. Thank you guys for putting on a great pre-party to what's going to be the biggest party in the history of Carnival on this Friday. God bless y'all and thank y'all for what y'all do for our city as well as the programs. You know, the book giveaways, bike giveaways, and dinners and lunches for seniors. We can't forget about that. It's more than just a party. It's about giving back to our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Thomas. Council, like Council President Morel.
Thank you. I'd like to begin by saying uh, my son goes to Heinz Gentilly, and he was extremely excited when King and Doctor Queen Spears, I work with too many doctors. No, you always put the doctor somewhere. Doctor Queen Spears were attending. He was so excited. He put on what he thought was a gold shirt, but it was really kind of like a neon green. So I appreciate y'all for knowing his color brightness, but those children were so excited to be part of Mardi Gras and for y'all to come out there to their school and to make yourselves president. It, it was so aspirational because so many get over afterwards were like, I want to be in Zulu someday. I want to be in Zulu. So I mean, y'all know your membership's got a waiting list, but that's only the waitlist of the adults who have aspired to be in. You probably have kids from senior in high school down. You probably have a waiting list that's tens of thousands of people. Uh, I want to also want to add, as y'all know, and I know I've worked with your president on it. We're looking diligently post-Mardi Gras, try and reform what Mardi Gras is about, what the crews are doing. And a lot of that deals with groups like Zulu and what you have set the bar to be in a Mardi Gras crew. Our obligation as a city is to support crews who are doing a fantastic job presenting parades, activities that promote our city and our culture. I think part of where we have, we have strayed is you have other crews that they get to pray once a year. And their organizations have turned into, they collect their dues and they do their parade, and that feel, they feel like that's their obligation. As an organization, y'all work year-round. It is a social aid and pleasure club. You do everything possible throughout the year to lift up our community, to help with everything that's going on in our community, and Mardi Gras Day is a culmination of a year of work Zulu does. Y'all are in the trenches every single day. And when you look at the crews that are doing things right, they're the ones that have a symbiotic relationship with the city. We, we support what you do on Mardi Gras Day in response to the work you do for our city the rest of the year. And more crews need to follow your example. Because it is not appropriate that while crews like y'all set the bar this high, you got crews down here where it's just we're subsidizing a party, one party once a year. And a party even that good. I'm just not, not going to say anything about that. But all that being said, thank you so much for what you do. Thank you so much for bringing the heat every single year on Mardi Gras Day. I'm sure there is some dead King of Rex who's like, we really should have went first. Because by the time y'all, y'all are done, everybody's, everybody's done moved on. All that being said, hail Zulu. All, all the rich people are like, oh, no, no, I'm, I'm not, I'm just saying like it is. Hail Zulu.
Boy, are you in trouble.
I'm gonna be brief. Uh, I'm gonna be, I'm gonna be brief. Um, no, I just, I, look, I, I really appreciate, you know, I think pretty much every single one of you all told us thank you and, you know, and thanked us for, for, for the support. But I have to tell you, I mean, really, the big thank you goes to all of you. Because every single time that the city has needed Zulu's help, you all have stepped up. And I know I've talked about this before, and I thank you all individually, but whether it's whether it's a hurricane and there needs to be assistance with like food giveaways, Zulu volunteers always come through. We go back to COVID, you know, back during COVID, it's like you all helped us with different, um, testing drives, vaccine drives. I mean, it's like Zulu volunteers once again came through. And so really, the big thank you is, is to you all. And I'm so excited that we're back to really what feels more like a normal Mardi Gras finally, right? And so I'm so excited to see Zulu on, uh, Tuesday, which doctor, please, please, man, work your magic, okay? Because last year it was picture perfect, picture perfect on Tuesday. Please do that again, okay? And to, um, Queen Dr. Spears, King Spears, I hope that you have a beautiful reign. Uh, to Dr. Spears, you're going to be such a beautiful shining star, such a tremendous role model up there for young girls to look at and say, wow, look at Dr. Spears. I hope that maybe one day I can be like her and be a queen of Zulu. So I look forward to seeing you up there as well. I, I always like to, to celebrate, um, the queen of Zulu because I, I love seeing, you know, the little girls always look up to her and just with this like admiration and really um, wanting to aspire to one day be that. So congratulations to you in being named queen. You're welcome. Thank you.
Councilmember King.
Congratulations, King and Queen Spears. To all the Zulu members, thank you for all that you do, not just a Mardi Gras day, but all year round mentoring our young men with the Junior Zulus, mentoring our young women. I don't think the city would be the same without Zulu. So again, thank you for all that you do year-round, not just Mardi Gras Day and hail Zulu.
Thank you. Councilmember Harris.
Thank you, uh, King and Queen. Just so beautiful. Um, it's so good to see your lovely face again today. Um, I hope that you had a lovely femme fatale. Um, when you think about Zulu, when you think about Mardi Gras, you think about Zulu automatically. I mean, emblematic of Mardi Gras. There could be, and I said this before, there could be no Mardi Gras without Zulu. There could be no New Orleans without Zulu. So when we talk about your service, it's a history of service. It's a history that dates back to what? Almost a hundred years. Yeah? And so we need to celebrate you, uplift you. Um, I agree with President Morel. You know, Rex is great and all, but what I wake up to do is to celebrate with you on Mardi Gras Day, and I'm excited to do that again this year. So thank you for everything that you do. Province Prince, you threw a heck of a party.
All righty, Councilman Jerusso.
I, I just like the fact that Councilmember Morel is lobbying for a six-year-old to join Zulu and like, what, twelve years? It's like, it's like a waiting list already, and he's got to make sure everything gets, uh, done in time. Look, I, I, I think I want to echo what my colleague said, which is Zulu is not just Mardi Gras Day, it's year-round. And how much of part of the fabric, um, your organization is to the entire New Orleans community and how much you all do. Um, I know, sitting next to a former king, always heard you ain't the king until the coronation. So I know, I, I know you're, I know you're very close to getting there, and I wish you the best and hope you all have really such a fun day. Thank you for promising good weather, which doctor too. We're going to hold you to that, um, on Tuesday. I know it's going to be a little bit warmer than normal, but we're looking forward to you all having such a fantastic time. And honestly, um, I think as everybody says, you look forward to Mardi Gras Day, you look to Zulu rolling first, and, and we wish you all nothing but the best and hail Zulu.
Thank you.
And we do have a proclamation for all of our characters and our leaders, and, um, Brother Robertson does have those. So what we're going to do now is it's going to be our little challenging photo that we take with the Zulu at the front. Everybody's not going to get in it, but it's going to be symbolic. So I'm going to ask you all to come inside. We're going to take a photo here. And just once again, thank you for all that you do to make this season a special season, but to make the year and our city a special occasion, um, all the time for all the positive things that you do. Thank you very much. Let's come up to the front.
And after we have the gifts for all the council.
We're ready, council member?
Uh, yes, yes, my clerk. I think the first item we have is executive session.
That's not the one.
Okay.
We're going to do the consent agenda. Okay. We're going to do the consent agenda.
Oh my, alright, it's consent agenda. I'm sorry.
Okay. The consent agenda, page four. We have a communication from Aaron Spears, Chief of Staff and Counsel, Counsel Utilities Regulatory Office. This should be marked received. We have a communication from Megan Murphy, Senior Building Planner Examiner, Department of Safety and Permits. This should be marked received. We have a communication from Cynthia Davis, Department of Safety and Permits, City of New Orleans, 824 Locue Place. This should be marked received. Suggested hearing date set for March the third, the ninth. We have a communication from Michelle N. Thompson, Business Manager, New Orleans Public Library. This should be marked received. We have a communication from Tammy S. Hanson, Executive Secretary, New Orleans Public Library. This should be marked received. We have a communication from Tima Johnson, Executive Assistant, New Orleans Redevelopment Authority. This should be marked received. We have a communication from Jennifer Avagnino, MD, Director of Health, City of New Orleans. This should be marked received. We have a communication from Zach Smith, Zach Smith Consulting and Design, 3300 Beenville Avenue. This should be marked received. Suggested hearing date is March the ninth. We have a communication from April Hung, Permit Intake Analyst, Department of Safety and Permits, City of New Orleans, 2126 Mandeville Street. We have a communication from Stephanie Navarez, Roof and Solution Office Manager, 900 South Peters Street. This should be marked received. Suggested hearing date, March the ninth. We have a communication from Tara G. Richard, Director of Counsel Relation, Office of Mayor Cantrell. This should be marked received and referred to the Public Works Committee. We have a communication from Tara G. Richard, Director of Counsel Relation, Office of Mayor Latoya Cantrell. This should be marked received and it, the motion will be adopted later on today under suspension. We have a communication from Tara G. Richard, Director of Counsel Relation, Office of Mayor Latoya Cantrell. This should be marked received and referred to the Public Works Committee. We have communication from Tara G. Richard, Director of Counsel Relation, Office of Mayor Latoya Cantrell. This should be marked received and referred to the Community Development Committee. We have the report of Gilbert A. Montano, Chief Administrative Officer, City of New Orleans. This should be marked received. We have the report of the Deputy Director of the New Orleans Historic District Landmark Commission, Central Business District Historic District Landmarks Commission, 3300 Beenville Street. This should be marked received. We have a the report of the Deputy Director of the New Orleans Aviation Historic, Historic District, the New Orleans Historic District Landmark Commission, Central Business District Historic District Landmarks Commission, 725 Mandeville Street. We have a report of Gilbert A. Montano, Chief Administrative Officer, City of New Orleans. This should be marked received. We have a report of the Deputy Director of the New Orleans Historic District Landmarks Commission, Central Business District Historic District Landmarks Commission, 8829 Jeanette Street. This should be marked received. We have the report of the Executive Director of the City Planning Commission. This should be marked received. Suggested hearing date is March the ninth. We have the report of Anita Curran, Council Research Officer, New Orleans City Council, 1923 St. Charles Avenue. We have the report of Anita Curran, Council Research Officer, New Orleans City Council, 2227 Nord Derby Street. We have ordinance calendar number thirty three, and this should be marked received. We have ordinance calendar number 34,018 by Councilmembers Moreno, Morrell, Jeruso, and Harris, the Budget Audit Board of Review Committee Recommended Approval. We have ordinance calendar number 34,019 by Councilmembers Moreno, Morrell, Jeruso, and Harris, the Budget Audit Board of Review Committee Recommended Approval. We have ordinance calendar number 34,024 by Councilmember King, 1441 through 1451 North Rampart Street, 1104 Columbus Street, and 1115 Calerac Street, zoning docket 9122. We have ordinance calendar number 34,025. This will be removed from the consent ado- aden- consent agenda and it will be adopted later in a meeting because of amendments. We have ordinance calendar number 34,026 by Councilmembers Jeruso, Green, Harris, King, Moreno, Morrell, and Thomas by request. The fiscal note was received. The Budget Audit Board of Review Committee Recommended Approval. We have ordinance calendar number 34,037 by Councilmembers Jeruso, Moreno, Green, and Thomas by request. The fiscal note was received. The Budget Audit Board of Review Committee Recommended Approval. We have ordinance calendar number 34,039 by Councilmembers Jeruso, Moreno, Green, and Thomas by request. The fiscal note was received. The Budget Audit Board of Review Committee Recommended Approval. We have ordinance calendar number 34,040 by Councilmembers Jeruso, Moreno, Green, and Thomas by request. The fiscal note was received. The Budget Audit Board of Review Committee Recommended Approval. We have ordinance calendar number 34,041 by Councilmembers Jeruso, Moreno, Green, and Thomas by request. The fiscal note was received. The Budget Audit Board of Review Committee Recommended Approval. We have ordinance calendar number 34,042 by Councilmembers Jeruso, Moreno, Green, and Thomas by request. The fiscal note was received. The Budget Audit Board of Review Committee Recommended Approval. We have ordinance calendar number 34,051 by Councilmember Jeruso. By request. The fiscal note was received. The Budget Audit Board of Review Committee Recommended Approval. We have ordinance calendar number 34,052 by Councilmember Jeruso. By request. The fiscal note was received. The Budget Audit Board of Review Committee Recommended Approval. We have ordinance calendar number 34,060 by Councilmembers Jeruso, Moreno, Green, and Thomas by request. The fiscal note was received. The Budget Audit Board of Review Committee Recommended Approval. We have ordinance calendar number 34,061 by Councilmembers Jeruso, Moreno, Green, and Thomas by request. The fiscal note was received. The Budget Audit Board of Review Committee Recommended Approval. On, we have resolution R. 2373 by Councilmembers Morrell, Moreno, Jeruso, Harris, King, Green, and Thomas. The Utility Cable Telecommunications and Technology Committee and Climate Changes Sustainability Committee Recommended Approval. We have resolution R. 2374 by Councilmembers Morrell, Moreno, Jeruso, Harris, King, Green, and Thomas. The Utility Cable Telecommunications and Technology Committee and Climate Change and Sustainability Committee Recommended Approval. We have resolution R. 2375 by Councilmembers Morrell, Moreno, Jeruso, Harris, King, Green, and Thomas. The Utility Cable Telecommunications and Technology Committee and Climate Change and Sustainability Committee Recommended Approval. Those are all the matters on the consent agenda.
Thank you. We actually have several, several cards of individuals wishing to speak. The first up we have is Alyssa Johnson. And after Ms. Johnson, we have Raydell Green Cole and then Byron Cole.
My name is Alyssa Johnson. I wanted to come and ask for help for our neighborhood. I have emailed the council multiple times. The last time I got a response was 2018, which obviously is not y'all. Um, so I wanted to introduce myself, see how I can get help. I do have a few issues that I'd like addressed, like specific properties that we're having issues with. Um, and then see how I can get help moving forward for our neighborhood. We just feel like, I don't know if it's because we're poor, we're just ignored in our small area. Um, the first is 2418 Treasure. I literally started it on this since 2018. It's owned. They pay their taxes. The city hardly ever cuts the grass. The homeless actually burned it a year ago. It's falling over. It's still here. And there's no, I mean, you're, y'all are turning away money. You should be finding them constantly. Property was never boarded, never cut. Um, the one across the street, 2425 Treasure, same thing. They pay their taxes, but nothing. The grass is never cut. The roof is caving in. So. I live here. Thank you.
Um, I'm assuming you're in the Edgewood Park neighborhood?
Um, I'm next to um, 610 and 10 behind that Brothers gas station.
Oh, you might be a little further down. Um.
And that's why, I don't know why, once we cross 610, it's like we're ignored because we're not really part of St. Rock. We're not part of Gentilly.
Well, we'll, we'll have some staffers come out and talk to you. I do want to say in those properties you're, you're referencing, there's actually a blight ordinance we're taking up to redefine what blight is. To your point, historically, blighted property, blighted property law in the city has been very inefficient because even when you do get fines put on properties, the threshold to be back in compliance is cutting the grass. So what happens is that you'll have somebody who doesn't cut the grass for six months. You'll find them. They'll go cut the grass. They'll come to the adjudicatory hearing, show they cut the grass, pay some modest fines and go back into the cycle. Um, one of the ordinances that'll be up, I believe in front of joints, quality of life on the 27th, we're going to redefine blight to talk about if a building is not back in commerce and vacant.
So should I come?
You should come to that hearing and, and share your, share your, because the, the reality is, is that we have a tremendous amount of property throughout the city that's been blighted or occupied since Katrina and we're now almost 20 years out. It's not fair to the residents of those communities to have people who are sitting on those properties as pseudo investment property, I guess. Someday they might sell, but they, there's nothing that pushes them to have to act on either selling that property, clearing the property of a building, or just return it to commerce. And what we've seen over the last almost 20 years is without the city having some impetus to push them, they never will. So I would suggest you come to that hearing on those issues because that blight bill directly addresses what you're talking about.
I used to call 311 all the time, 311. They would get closed. I'd call, ask why. Even stopped the code inspector one day and he said the system's broke. I'm not going to keep finding people. And so he literally told me he wasn't doing his job. And so then it doesn't matter if we report them. He's, they're not even, so then literally they're just sitting in our neighborhood when.
No, you, you're, you're a hundred percent correct. When I talk to residents about 311 right now, reminds me of, and I'm going to date myself because I'm sure OT probably was hearing the song fresh, but Flavor Flav saying 911's a joke, 311's a joke. We don't want them. So I mean, that's kind of where it is with 311 right now because people feel like they're, you're, you're leaving, you're leaving the receipts by making the complaints, but you're seeing no activity on the complaints.
And they get closed.
And they get closed. And the thing is, is that they don't get closed because they reached a resolution. They get closed because the person following the complaint just goes, the person who's in city government gets frustrated and stops. And that's not appropriate for the residents. So.
And then we also have a issue on the street over, and I don't know if that'll be Mr. Green.
This is all Mr. Green's district problem.
Okay, um, because we have issues with illegal junkyard work being done, they're blocking the street. It's actually a Nord lot that they're using as a junkyard in our neighborhood, which is a bigger question to me. Why Nord not policing their lots?
Well, I don't know about Nord not policing it, but let me say like this. I mean, obviously, three days a week, we have a representative at the library who is District D, the, the neighborhood engagement person, and you can certainly have someone to attend that. But I have attorney Monique, um, who's, who is here in that first row, and she'll talk to you about those specific properties, because we'll do research on the three-one-one that is done. We've done a great job with tearing down a significant number of blighted properties. Tearing them down is hard.
We've had two recently.
Right, right. So you know that this can be done. It's just a matter sometimes of owners standing in the way, or there's being processes that we have to follow. But I can tell you, if you can be specific with the addresses with attorney Monique.
And then I'm, my neighbors, I told them I was coming, and they wanted me to bring up flooding. If we could, I recently went to behind Gentilly Walmart, and they have like the deep lots.
Right.
Our, ours, all of Gentilly just literally drains onto us, and we're bounded by that canal and that railroad, so I often often have two feet of water in my house. I've flooded nine times since twenty-fifteen. Um, so the neighbors asked me, since I was coming, would I please see if somebody would help us with, since other neighborhoods have had resolution with some of their flooding issues?
Mrs. Juicer, would you make comment?
Uh, I just, I just wanted to say I'm over here. Um, two things. One, three-one-one is not a well-functioning system, not a functioning system, really. And we've even heard that from members of the administration. So during budget quarterly, I think we need an explanation of how it's working. I mean, I'm seeing somebody else on social media say, hey, mail your office in twenty-twenty. I realize it's not twenty-eighteen, and I don't have a resolution. Number two is, I'm introducing legislation today to put on the ballot, code enforcement being, it's code, code enforcement being its own office. Code enforcement lives some in community development, some in sanitation, some in safety and permits. You can't have a functioning department if it lives in three different places. So let the voters decide for things that have been blighted and out of commerce, and that are, that are hurting neighbors and neighborhoods. That's, I, I, that's, that, that's, that's why, that's why we need a single, that's why we need a single department to help deal with that. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Oh. Raydell, little green Cole. Mr. Cole. Mr. Cole.
I told her with the issues were flooding there.
She owns the house, she owns the house, there is no landlord.
Hello.
Mister, okay. Miss, Miss Cole, whenever you're ready.
Morning off. I'm gonna read off some address. Twenty-twenty Tennessee, twenty-twenty-five Tennessee, twenty-thirty-nine Reynas, twenty-forty-one Reynas, twenty-thirty-one Tennessee, twenty-three thirty Reynas, forty-seven, one seventy-eight Reynas, forty-eight oh one, prayer, uh, North Prayer Street. Uh, forty-eight, three eighty-five Jordan Avenue, forty-nine seventeen North Prayer, forty-nine sixty-one North Claybone, uh, five thousand one North Johnson, five thousand nine North Johnson, five thousand thirteen North Johnson, fifty twenty-seven North Derbyne, thank you, fifty twenty-eight North Roman, fifty-four twenty-nine North Derbyne, sixteen twenty-four Reyes, seventeen thirty-three Jordan Avenue, seventeen twenty-five Tennessee, seventeen twenty-eight Deslon, seventeen thirty-four Deslon, seventeen thirty-eight Deslon, seventeen forty-two Deslon, seventeen forty-nine Tennessee, eighteen oh one Jordan Avenue, eighteen oh two Reynas, eighteen eleven Deslon, six, I'm sorry, eighteen thirty-nine Deslon, nineteen oh two Tennessee, nineteen seventeen Reynas, twenty twenty Tennessee, twenty twenty-five. Those are addresses that Mr. Cole would take.
It's her two minutes. Yeah, I got him after her, right? Okay. And there was no clock for the last person that spoke. I just want to know, we're gonna have a rule, we gotta be a constant, JP. I'm just saying, come on, check some balances. Come on, ain't none of us going. It'll be a rule, gotta be a constant.
The council members.
Person before, didn't have no.
Mr. Cole, I'm answering your question. If council members interrupt you to ask questions, I, we take that in account with your, with your time.
Saying they didn't have a clock at all. I was watching.
They didn't have a clock.
I'm just saying, let's keep a constant, man.
Using up your own time right now, though.
No, no, so what is he doing? I just wanted to tell him, you're gonna tell him to sit down? I just wanted to tell him.
Sir. Sir.
I was thinking.
Sir, Mr. Cole.
What's happening?
Mr. Cole.
Yeah, all those properties are owned by Brad Pitt. All those properties are owned by Brad Pitt. We got another list of properties that are owned by his cousin Troy Henry. Half of them are, half of them are blighted. But we got transplants coming in from other places that won't start with my auntie Lucy in the night wall. We not finna do that. We gonna talk about this, Oliver? Troy, you know what's up with Troy? We gonna talk about it. Why Brad Pitt owned half the lower nine? And why is half of it blighted, Joe? And why y'all ain't saying nothing? Businesses on St. Claude, on Robertson? Why? And why are we starting with the indigenous citizen? Come on, man, Joe. I know where you come from. Why are we doing this? Your attempts didn't work. We beat your boy in civil court, and we bout to beat him in criminal court. You sent your driver out here to harass and, and, and assault my wife, and then refused to drop the charges. You next for the recall, Mr. Green.
I'm ready.
Ah, I know you are, because you wasn't fit from the jump. So what I want to say now in closing is this. We don't have no friends that are greater than our responsibilities and our rights. Tired of playing. We sit here and watch y'all have a conversation weekly about blight spawned and perpetuated by transplants. And we're looking at this corporate, the archdiocese building, something fell off it when I drove by it last week. Do you know that, Elena? The archdiocese blighted, right across the street from the big one, blighted. Troy Henry on Buku blighted in the night ward. Brad Pitt owns Buku blighted in the night ward, documented. And a whole bunch of his other associations that I ain't gonna bust out with yet. Them traditional family New Orleans names, they buying them properties in the LLCs too. We on to you. We know why you ran for District E, Oliver. We not gonna let you solidify this criminality. And it's on and popping, however you want it to be. Y'all have a good day. Will somebody get him arrested? You arrested me and my wife last time. What the fuck is really going on, Elena? What's up, Elena?
Mr. Cole.
What's up? The chief of police wasn't here when he was assaulting me last time. What's up?
Mr. Cole.
What's up? Fix this. Fix this.
Mr. Cole.
Clearly, I'm being harassed.
Mr. Cole.
Fix this.
Mr. Cole, your time is up.
Where's the security?
He's looking at you right now, because your time is up. Thank you, Mr. Cole. Appreciate you.
Because I'm gonna keep coming.
Thank you, Mr. Cole.
I'm gonna keep coming to meetings.
Thank you, Mr. Cole. Mr. Burnside. Mr. Burnside.
He didn't hear me get threatened.
Mr. Burnside.
Courthouse.
Go ahead, Mr. Burnside.
Even though the chief of police was sitting there when I got threatened. Now he gonna put me out.
Mr. Burnside, go ahead.
So fix that for him. He was fat, man. He died in the city that time, immediately. But I went to jail. Come on, man, fix that for him.
So here's the deal. Here's the deal. Here's the deal. There's a lot of stuff on it. There's a lot of stuff on the consent agenda, and there's a lot of people that need your attention. And one of the problems with people needing your attention and a lot of stuff on the consent agenda is that people feel that they're not heard. Right? I mean, I feel I'm not heard. I've been here seven years here. I wasn't gonna do this, but since I'm gonna change my mind. Um, I got two minutes. Here, randomly picked. For more than five years, in Council Resolution R seventeen four twenty-seven, the Council directed in ENO, Energy New Orleans, to provide recommended minimum SAIFI and SAIDI standards for evaluation by the Council and its technical advisors, in which ENO would have the proposed, the level and structure of standards that it preferred, and ENO did not provide its recommended minimum standards directed in. Guys, I have a master's degree in physics. I've taught physics. I've read physics books. I've read these two things twice. Once online a couple of weeks ago and once today. It actually hurts my heart. It really does. It hurts my heart. I can't understand these. Now, admittedly, I did physics twenty years ago when I was thirty-five, and my brain now is less than it was then. I admit that. How can you expect people to understand and participate in their own government? Of course, they're angry and they're frustrated. I'm angry and frustrated. I interact with AT&T over three poles, three poles. One of them's laying down on the ground. One of them is so rotted through that you can physically pick it up and move the base and freak out staff members. The other is so bad, you can stick your fist inside the bottom of the pole. It's got such a large gaping hole in it. None of them have been fixed yet. As near as I can tell, none of them will ever be fixed, because I've been bitching about the one that you can pick up and move for over two years. And I'm the one that a councilperson staff sent a little email to boasting about, oh, I got a hundred poles fixed, and somewhere in Council D E, they only got fifty. It's Robin Peter to pay Paul. We're never gonna get Energy to increase its money and decrease its dividend. We're never gonna get AT&T to even admit we exist. And Cox is the silent partner. I understand when hearts hurt and people don't feel like they're listened to. I come and I try, and I love you guys sometimes, but sometimes you make me cry.
Thank you, Mr. Burnside. That's all the comments we have, our clerk.
Motion to approve consent agenda. Oh, sorry, I've been moving second. Bye.
Ready.
Six she's, no nays.
We now, we're now gonna go to page twenty-three, the legislative grouping. A communication from Monique N. Green, Legislative Director, Councilmember Eugene Green, Jr., District D, transmitted in the Mayor's Office of Economic Development's recommendation of approval and requesting the scheduling of a public hearing for the following tax exemption application. ITE application twenty-two zero zero four nine, thirty-two oh one France Road, Tervia Industries LLC. We have resolution R twenty-three seventy-nine by Councilmember Green, a resolution approving the ITE application for thirty-two oh one France Road.
I am so pleased to have the opportunity to, as the District Councilmember, support the approval of the resolution that will make the investment by this firm, from whom you will hear information, um, possible. They're locating in an area that is significantly in need of economic development, but was designed for the purpose, an industrial business. We have an opportunity to put a recognized firm on France Road, which would, could be an incentive to other businesses to choose to locate in that area. What we're asked to do today is to approve an exemption of velouran tax for Terviva Industries LLC. They're eligible to participate in the industrial ad velouran taxation program, the ITEP, as it plans to construct a manufacturing facility to make edible pangamia oil at thirty-two hundred France Road, which is located at the port of New Orleans. Representatives of the firm are here to give details on how the facility will meet the eligibility requirements, and to tell us about the job opportunities that this project will bring. And as the members of the public hear about this job opportunity, and you hear the name of the firm, please feel free to contact that firm to find out about those job opportunities. In my opinion, I am pleased to be able to represent this district at a time when this firm is going to invest significantly in this underutilized location. We do have three comment cards, but at this time, first, we'll take representatives of Terviva. They will introduce themselves for the public, and I thank you for your investment.
Uh, hello, and, uh, first of all, uh, thank you all. I appreciate you guys having us here and, and, uh, appreciate your time, uh, listening to us. Uh, my name is Will Kush. I've been with Terviva for eleven years now. And, uh, I wanna just first start off just by sharing a little bit about, uh, what Terviva is, why we're here, uh, what we do, et cetera. Uh, and Terviva broadly, the reason Terviva is here is that we have seen and, and recognized a significant problem that, that we're facing on the horizon, which is that the demand, the, the demand for agricultural and food products is going up and up and up, and at the same time, the amount of land that's in productivity and the amount of crops that are feeding folks are, uh, getting squeezed. And case in point is, uh, our friends over in Florida were getting hit by a agricultural disease that's knocking out, uh, citrus. And so you can look at that, uh, citrus fields getting wiped out. There's different areas where salinity incursions challenging crops. Anyway, uh, that's the, that's the problem that Terviva recognized. And at the same time, as we're looking to increase the amount of outputs of, uh, important, important agricultural crops like vegetable oil and plant protein, the way that we're currently doing that is by clearing rainforest in the Amazon for soy and Indonesia for palm, et cetera, et cetera. We have found an amazing tree crop called pangamia that produces huge quantities, ten times the amount of oil per acre relative to soy, and we can grow our trees on marginal land. And what Terviva is doing is we're expanding and introducing pangamia oil and pangamia plant protein to the market. And we are in the process of looking for a site to build our very first ever demonstration facility to produce pangamia oil for sale into the market as an, as another alternative, a much more sustainable alternative to soy and, and, uh, palm. And we're very excited about the opportunity to partner with folks here in New Orleans to locate our very first ever, the world's first ever pangamia oil production facility right here, because, uh, New Orleans is just a fantastic, uh, site for us. We have a excellent population of highly educated folks, uh, such as my colleague Erica Stener, who we just, uh, hired locally to, to lead our operations. And we're very excited to, to explore, uh, putting our very first ever production facility right here in New Orleans. And so I appreciate y'all's time to, to discuss our application. I would be thrilled to discuss any, any questions y'all have, or any, any aspects of our, of our project that people are interested in learning more about. I'm, I'm absolutely, uh, excited to talk about any aspect of it that any, any folks are curious about.
Thank you. And, um, to the members of the public who are watching, I hope that you'll soon be changing your language after this vote today and say that you found the place. The first ever, right here in New Orleans. So.
Yes, sir.
Take a couple more comments, and then I'll go through the cards. Would you introduce yourself?
Hi, my name's Erica Stener. I'm a resident of District D. I am.
Indian Village, Indian Village.
Indian Village, yes.
So excited about that, too.
Yeah, thirty-eight twenty-one Fourth Street in Indian Village in Gentilly. Um, I was hired as a plant manager for this project. I will be also the hiring manager for the personnel in this plant, and I'm very excited to bring this opportunity and to bring this job to our city. Um, our plan starts to hire twelve to fifteen people that are gonna be permanently working in this plant. Uh, our, our package, our benefit packages exceed, uh, what currently exists in our work market, and we are very happy to do that. We include all the benefits, dental health ambition, as part of our, uh, benefit programs, and we're gonna have good paying jobs for especially, uh, looking for graduates or the PTEC, local PTECs programs, and people in our community as well.
Thank you very much. Would you introduce yourself?
Hello, I'm Rhonda Botner with Didier Consultants. We are the tax incentive consulting firm that are assisting Terviva with their industrial tax exemption application. So if there are any questions about the process, um, LEDs process, I'm here to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you very much. I could have had you all seated, so I, I appreciate your patience, and, um, we do have three comment cards, so within those comment cards, each member will have two minutes. Each person who's commenting will have two minutes to ask any questions. And, um, then we'll have you to come back to close it out. Okay? And then we'll have Councilmember Moreno to make a couple of comments, in addition to anybody else who wants to do so. Alrighty, first comment card, Michael Burnside. It's gonna be in this order, Michael Burnside, Jordan Michael, and Louis, that'd be probably David, but, um. Mr. Burnside, two minutes.
Yeah, two minutes. Hopefully I'm calmed down from my last two minutes. Um, so the Louisiana, somebody or another LED, my brain, my mind's gone. On page four of your large packet says that we're gonna lose a million bucks. So what do we get in exchange for losing a million bucks? Um, well, we get a bunch of equipment that's gonna have its life expectancy to be five years, and we're gonna give them tax exemptions for ten years, so we're never gonna get any taxes. So we're never going to get any taxes. So a lot of ITEP was the idea that after five or 10 years, then you get onto the tax rolls and you start paying taxes. In this case, there's not really going to be any taxes paid because this is an equipment only ITEP because the land's owned by the port. So we're not going to get any property tax out of it either. The beans are going to come in by truck and go out by truck. So they're not even going to use the port facilities as a port. They're not going to bring anything in with barges and they're not going to take anything out with ships. So we're going to have a business that doesn't pay property tax and doesn't have to pay other types of taxes in exchange for a dozen good paying jobs. So we're going to have a dozen good paying jobs and they're not going to pay much in the way of taxes. The pomegranate oil, or whatever the name of the oil is, has been around for a thousand years. It's not edible, historically speaking. It was used to tan hides or was used for biodiesel in India. They have a liquid on liquid solvent process that's going to turn a non-edible oil into an edible oil, which could be a very good thing because we've got eight billion people on the planet and they all need to eat. But we don't know where the waste product is going. The oil itself, in a raw form, kills fish and is used as an insecticide.
Well, Mr. Burnside, you're a good person. You can point out every negative possibility that there is. But I'm very pleased at the number of jobs that are going to be created on a site that is right now completely vacant. However, I understand your concerns. Maybe you can address the one issue, one of the issues that he brought up.
Please, and yes, thank you. Thank you for your comments. I'll, I'll point out that one of the reasons that we're really excited about the opportunity with the Port of New Orleans is that the, that site allows for us to expand beyond, you're, you're, you're very right. Initially, we have to start with a couple of trucks because we're just getting started. But the, the reason that we're excited about the Port of New Orleans opportunity is it allows for us to, to pursue what's called bulk in hull transportation of the vegetable oil. And so that's one of the reasons that we are excited about Port of New Orleans is that we can, we can start to facilitate and utilize some of the port's infrastructure. So that's one. Additionally, I will also acknowledge one of the reasons that pangamia oil is not generally recognized as a, as a food product is because historically it never was. Terviva, one of the reasons that we're getting so much enthusiasm, so much excitement is that we figured out what set of compounds are responsible for the bitter taste of pangamia oil. And we figured out how to remove just those compounds so that then what's left is a delicious vegetable oil that's great for sauteing, great for sauces, great for a whole range of different edible oil applications. And so we've got a lot of folks that are really excited to start working with us and start seeing like, hey, what, what's the, what's the best use for this? Should we use it as a cooking oil, as a fry oil, as something for, for sauces and dressings? So a whole bunch of different customers are very, very excited about working with us to, to start using a vegetable oil that is infinitely more sustainable than the current conventional oils, i.e. soy and palm, where the majority of that is produced by deforesting rainforest and stripping rainforest and planting those crops on, on new farmland. We use abandoned farmland to produce our, our trees, which store carbon in the ground and ultimately produce a vegetable oil that is truly genuinely sustainable. And we're super excited to be here with you all today to talk about the opportunity to put our facility, our very first, world's first facility at the Port of New Orleans.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much, Mr. Jordan Michael.
Thank you for the comment.
All right. Morning, everybody. I guess this is a good warm up right here. I put it, my name's Jordan Michael with thirty-five nineteen Eagle Street. I am actually just here for information only. I'm just learning about this, so really exciting. I know we're moving more towards the port side of the city, right? Because our tourism industry is in itself, house of cars like. I've been hearing a lot about, forgive me, I've been hearing a lot about how innovative this is, how great we're for development. I guess my only questions here are, is there a community benefits agreement being put in place between the city and the contract? Because we are given free money. How, how are you going about strategizing to engage with the community and specifically targeted hiring? Because we're talking about the desire area and anything developed over there, there's, there's very little economic opportunity and very underserved communities. So I'm curious what your strategy is there in working with the city and a CBA possibly and investing back into the area. Because if you are getting the tax credits and you are getting the free money, I would love to see that help the actual area that's within, right? So that's what I'm here about is community. That's mainly it. If you're going to be in Desire in Florida, make sure you're taking care of Desire in Florida. And that's, that's really what I got. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Michael. I would like to state on the record that there's no direct payment from the city going to the firm to do it. And you can comment on that too, because this is a public hearing. So we want everybody to be on the same page as to how these benefits are being calculated.
And thank you for the comment. Appreciate the comment. I'll, I'll answer by way of using an example of what, what we've done to date in Florida as a, as a proxy, as a, as an analogy for what. So the way that we've engaged with a community of folks where we operate in Florida and Hawaii, for example, when we've been out planting our trees, what we do is when we have an opportunity to plant trees or set up a facility is we always go and engage with local folks in the community because ultimately local folks are the ones who know the conditions best. And so as an example, when we were setting up some operations and, and looking to establish a tree nursery and plant some orchards and take care of the trees, we had to go out and we started working with the local high schools, local community colleges and tech schools to start just spreading information about what pangamia is, like why it's such an amazing crop, how Terviva is working to plant more trees and ultimately try to generate more interest among, amongst local students in particular because those are going to be the, those are going to be the folks that we're going to need to hire over time as we, as we've grown our orchards. And similarly, that's what we expect to do here as well, where we're, we're talking about building our first demonstration facility. But it's just that, it's just a demonstration facility. Ultimately, what we need to do is we need to scale up the, the, the scale of the vegetable oil production, the, the amount of food that we're producing. And as we do that, we're going to need to hire local folks to come work at the facility. And so the way that we're going to do that is by generating interest primarily, hopefully amongst students, any, at least any students who, who will listen to people like me. And so go to, go to local science classrooms, go to local high schools, local community colleges and talk with folks, anybody, again, anybody who will listen to me, Yamron, because those are going to be the people that we're going to need to hire going forward.
Thank you very much. And Mr. Michael, I'm counting on you to meet with that person, exchange information. And let's make sure that those products are available at the Barcelona Garden and also that Carver students are somehow involved. We'll talk about it. Okay, my last card is from Louis.
Good afternoon, council members. My name's Louis David. I'm the Vice President of Industry Attraction and Retention for the New Orleans Business Alliance. We're the public-private partnership between the city and the business community. And our goal is to grow the number of jobs in New Orleans, especially jobs that pay well, jobs that are available to local talent and doing that all through the lens of equity. I'd like to support the ITEP proposal before you today. This was a competitive process. The Terviva folks looked at many other sites, many other states. And the ITEP is definitely a tool that we use to stay competitive with other states that are also using incentives out there to lure projects just like this. We're excited about the salaries that this project will produce. And NOLA BA and our talent team stands ready to work with Terviva as well as other workforce initiatives in the city to make sure that local talent is connected to these jobs. And I just wanted to say, I thank you to all of you. I've met with a number of you on this project and some other projects recently. We're seeing lots of increased interest on the logistics side in New Orleans. And we look forward to coming before you with a number of other projects like this. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. David. Yes.
Again, Rhonda Botner with Didier Consultants. I just want to clarify something that the original comment, the first gentleman made. There, the company will be paying twenty percent in property taxes. The, the I T E program is an eighty percent abatement with a twenty percent payment to the, the local entities for their property taxes. And as far as the five years, that's the, the lease agreement currently with the port. And so accounting principals say that you've got to depreciate the assets as long as the, the lease is. So that's the reason for just the five-year projection right now.
Thank you. And Mr. Burnside, I do appreciate that. If you have any questions, I appreciate your interest in the city. You can ask that question today. But members of the council, are there any questions or comments? If not, I'm going to move to approve this application for the ITEP. And it's been seconded by Councilmember Thomas. Please vote your machines. And I'd like to close out with these important words. This is a win-win situation. We were looked at amongst many others that were looked at as a potential location for this plant with the support of the ITEP Review Committee, with the support of the City Council, with the support of those in my office and other offices here. We have today an announcement that an international firm is going to be located on thirty-two oh one France Road. And we hope that Terviva is the first of many developments to take place in that area. So I want to thank Terviva for their consideration. Today is the day that we say we have found this location, the first one in the nation. Thank you very much. This is a good news day. Thank you.
We're now on top of page twenty-four. We have a legislative grouping, a demolition request of Mr. Ross Clayborne, Real Estate Development, Rer debt, Real Estate and Construction Services, transmitting the application documents for demolition permit requiring city council review and approval for the following property. Nineteen twenty-three St. Charles Avenue, twenty-two dash thirty-six, one thirty-two dash demo council, District B. Motion M. twenty-three seventy-six by Councilmember Harris approving the demolition permit for the property located at nineteen twenty-three St. Charles Avenue.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. This motion allows demolition at nineteen twenty-three St. Charles Avenue. It's the old Trolley Stop Cafe. Although it's not in HCLC jurisdiction, HCLC had no opposition to the demo. This provides an exciting opportunity for a corner lot on St. Charles Avenue to get a much needed facelift with plans to be redeveloped as a mixed-use building that could greatly benefit the neighborhood. Is there any public comment? Any online comment? All right, I'm going to move approval. Second to my Councilmember Green. Six shades, motion passes. Thank you.
We're now on top of page twenty-five, All Matters. The demolition request of twenty-two twenty-seven North Derbyne Street has been deferred to March ninth. The legislative grouping of twenty-two twenty Broadway Street has been deferred. Motion M. twenty-three eighty has been deferred to March ninth for both matters. On top of page twenty-six, a legislative grouping, the HDLC appeal of Simone Siftonis requesting to appeal a historic district landlord's commission decision of denial of new standing seam metal roof for a property located at seven twenty-five Mandeville Street. We have motion M. twenty-three eighty-two by Councilmember King. Granted the applicant's request for the property located at seven twenty-five Mandeville Street subject to two provisos as follows. One, the metal roof color shall be limited to a dark shade of gray, black or bronze in a less reflective finish. Two, the details of the metal roof shall be approved by the HDLC.
HDLC?
Yes, thank you. Seven twenty-five Mandeville Street is a contributing rated structure located in the Foberg Marany Full Control Local Historic District. The owner has applied to remove the existing asphalt fiberglass roof to install a standing seam metal roof. As per the HDLC guidelines, metal roofs are typically not appropriate for highly visible roof slopes or where the original roof material would have been slate, especially on higher style buildings. Although asphalt shingles are not a historic roofing material, they are designed to mimic slate roofing in color and texture. As such, they are considered to be a visually more appropriate material than metal. Based on this, staff recommended denial of the request for new metal roofing and recommend that the applicant consider utilizing an asphalt shingle roof to mimic the appearance of slate. However, if approval of metal roofing is granted, staff recommended a proviso that it be specified in a dark color with a less reflective finish. This item came before the commission at their hearing of January fourth, two thousand twenty-three. At that time, the commission reviewed the staff recommendation, the photos of the Creole cottage in question and the applicant's testimony. Donna Wakeman, the representative for the Foberg Marany Historic District, made a motion to deny the application. The motion, seconded by Annie Cambria, passed unanimously.
Thank you. We have one comment card, Mr. Simon. At seven twenty-five Mandeville, sorry, couldn't read the last name. I'm sorry, Simone.
Simone, Simone Sepuentes. I am an AP Environmental Science teacher and I have brought some of my students from class today. So they've gotten a wonderful education firsthand of how city government works. Thank you for that.
No, no, they, they did.
And so the reason I want a standing metal roof is because of the environmental effects and benefits of it. And I feel that the way that the statute that created the HDLC is laid out, it's supposed to be for the education, cultural, economic and general welfare of the public through the preservation, protection and regulation of building sites, monuments, et cetera. The reality is that we live in a city that's below sea level. When we have these architect, these architectural shingles on our roofs, they're not historic. They're made with not so great practices. They're not easily recycled and they increase the energy uses, the reliance on fossil fuels in a city that is below sea level and increases climate change. So according to the Sandborn Mouse, which are old fire ratings of cities across the country, there is no distinction between metal and slate on those roofs. Metal roofs have existed for a long time. The policy of the HDLC to not allow standing seam changed recently internally without guidelines being publicized. And my issue is that if I can have a standing set metal roof when I ask city council, then the HDLC should just be allowing everyone in my community to have those. They're less expensive in terms of longevity. If I'm going to have to buy a shingle roof twice, that's going to be more expensive than the excess of buying a metal roof once. They've been rated to reduce energy usage inside the home, which is not only going to reduce like fossil fuel consumption, but my expenses as a, as a school teacher. They're recyclable, they reduce, they cause, they have all these environmental benefits. And the issue is that if we have to go through all these, jump through all these hurdles to come to city council to have something that you guys would have let us have anyway, why shouldn't HDLC just let us have it from jump? Because I've had to take days off of work to be here. My community no longer looks the way that it used to and it's not fair that only wealthy people who have time to take off can come to city council to have historic homes. My roof has been leaking since Ida. I had to tarp my roof on my own yesterday. Like we shouldn't have to do this to have pretty homes. We shouldn't have to jump through these hurdles to have things that are going to benefit our society. They're going to reduce, like more reflective roof is higher rated for energy star to reduce consumption in the home. Sorry.
No problem. Any, any comments from the days? President Moreau.
Thank you. I hear exactly what you're saying. I have metal roof and it is, has a tremendous impact on your quality of life, your energy bills, energy efficiency, and it is more environmentally sound. And like you said, it's when your shingle roof eventually fails, that ends up in a landfill anyway. So I hear what you're saying and I look forward to having a vote on it.
And I know, Mr. Moreau, I believe that you and Ms. Moreno are both on the Sustainability Commission. I mean, I would recommend to bring this up to that commission to change the policies at the HDLC level so that other homeowners do not have to do what I have had to done.
We will certainly take that into account. I think your earlier point about those people who are trying to live inside of an historic home while also enjoying all of the efficiencies of, of modern living. I mean, because ideally, when you have these older homes, older homes didn't have air conditioning either. But we decided as a society, that's a requirement as the climate gets hotter. And so we have relaxed the rules somewhat to account for modern, modern technology and the reality of climate change. And I think that it should not be a luxury only afforded to those who can afford to build a brand new house.
Exactly.
Thank you.
Any online comments? Any online comments? Well, I do my best to try to balance the mission of historic preservation with the desire of property owners to incorporate sustainable and resilient building science best practices. As such, this motion approves the applicant's appeal with the provisos that the metal roof color be limited to a dark shade of gray, black, or bronze in a less, a less reflective finish, and that the details of the metal roof be approved by HDLC staff. So I make a motion to approve the applicant's, the applicant's request, seconded by Councilmember Green. Five, six yeas, seven yeas. Motion is adopted. Thank you.
Twenty-seven, All Matters. Zoning docket ninety-five twenty-two has been deferred to March ninth. Zoning docket one twenty-three has been deferred to March ninth. On top of page twenty-eight, zoning docket two twenty-three, two twenty-three has been deferred to March second for a special council meeting. On top of page thirty, we have legislative grouping. Zoning docket six twenty-three CCW Properties, requesting a conditional use to permit live entertainment, secondary use in a brewery in a MU one medium-intensity mixed-use district on square twenty-one Lot X in the fourth municipal district bounded by Chapatula's Eighth, St. Thomas, and Seventh Streets. Municipal address thirty thirty-three Chapatula Street. The recommendation of the City Planning Commission being for approval, subject to two provisos. We have motion M twenty-three seventy-one by Councilmember Harris approving and granting the applicant's conditional use request on zoning docket number six twenty-three, subject to two provisos for property located at thirty thirty-three Chapatula Street.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. This motion approves a conditional use request for live entertainment, specifically indoor live entertainment, as a secondary use at Nola Brewing. Stephen, will you brief us on the CPC report?
Sure. Thank you, Councilmember. So this property, Nola Brewery, is in a zoning district that allows live entertainment as an ancillary component to bars and restaurants as well as breweries. And Nola, as they sort of grow and try to meet the needs of their customers, wants to create a permanent ability to do that. It's totally within the building, no real impact expected by virtue of it being fully contained within the building. The planning commission had a public hearing. There was no comment in opposition. So given those factors, the commission recommends approval.
Great, thank you. This brewery also has an existing Good Neighbor Agreement. And as Stephen said, is in an area where this additional live indoor music will not create a damaging impact on the surrounding neighbors. I do have one comment. Mr. Warner?
I actually don't really have a comment. I just wanted to be here today to ask for your approval and answer any questions that anybody who might oppose this might have.
Okay. Thank you. Any comments from the dais? Any online comment? I'll go ahead and move. Second to my Councilmember Jeruso. Six yeas. Thank you.
We're on top of page thirty-one. Ordinance calendar number thirty-three, thirty-three thousand eight ninety-three has been deferred to March ninth. On top of page thirty-two, we have a legislative grouping. Ordinance calendar number thirty-four thousand twenty by Councilmembers Moreno and Morel. An ordinance to amend ordinance number twenty-nine thousand two sixty-five MCS as amended, entitled ordinance, providing an operating budget of revenues for the city of New Orleans for the year twenty twenty-three to appropriate funds to the Mayor's Office of Workforce Development within miscellaneous programs to provide funding for an increase in youth participants and otherwise to provide with respect there too. And there is an amendment to ordinance number thirty-four thousand twenty by Councilmember Moreno. Number one, on page two, line three, replace the figure one million nine hundred thousand with two million one hundred thousand. Number two, on page two, line four, replace the figure one million nine hundred thousand with two million one hundred thousand. Number three, on page two, line seven, replace the figure one million thou, one million nine hundred thousand with two million one hundred thousand. Number four, on page two, line eight, replace the figure one million nine hundred thousand with two million one hundred thousand. That is the amendment.
All right. Thank you so much, Madam Clerk. Members, this is the ordinance that went through the Budget Committee and received unanimous support. It is about increasing the slots for the Youth Summer Jobs Program. For some reason, the number of spots had dwindled all the way to three hundred and sixty-five. We know we need a tremendous boost in in that particular program. So what this particular ordinance does is it boosts the slots from three hundred and sixty-five slots to now one thousand slots. The amendment that we're going to vote on in just one second, that also allows for staffing increases for workforce so that they have enough individuals to be able to navigate the now larger number of applicants that'll be coming in. And so we make sure that if we're going to do a thousand slots, that we can fill those thousand slots. The other piece, too, that I would just mention with this is that workforce is doing significant outreach now to different business owners throughout the city to provide as many opportunities for our youth as possible for this particular program. Councilmember Green?
As I said when this was brought before the committee, I just want to emphasize to our citizens that we can spend tons of time being negative, or we can spend a lot of time taking advantage of the resources that are out there. This council has worked to make resources available. This is a thousand jobs for the summer. In addition to all those other jobs that will be advertised, that everybody sees every day at different restaurants. And I will also emphasize, using my children as an example, sometimes a volunteer opportunity is something that can help your career move forward. My daughter is getting her white coat from medical school, and I remember her graduate, I mean, volunteering at different places during the summer. So with this thousand jobs, the other jobs that are available, the volunteer opportunities, there is always something for our youth to do in our city. The City Council is going out of its way. I want to encourage community organizations and those who consider themselves advocates to tell the youth about this, to visit the website of the Mayor's Office of Workforce Development. And let's get these thousand jobs, plus all those other jobs at NORD, plus other opportunities filled this summer. So it can be a very busy and productive summer for all of our youth. There is a lot for our youth to do in the city of New Orleans. And thank you, Councilmembers Moreno and Morel, for your work on this. I would certainly like to be added as a co-sponsor. I think that I did that the last time because it's talking about jobs for our youth. It's good news. Thank you.
Madam Clerk, please add Councilmember Green as a co-author. Let me go ahead and.
And can you just add everybody?
Yeah, we'll add everybody as as co-author. Let me go ahead and adopt the amendment, and then I'll take public comment. This is a motion to adopt the amendment.
Second.
It's been seconded by Councilmember Green. All in favor?
Yay.
Seven yeas, no nays, and the amendment is adopted. Okay, public comment. Michael Willis? Come on up, Mr. Willis, and then followed by George Mahdi, and then Michael Burnside.
How y'all doing? Good morning.
Good morning. If you can put two minutes on the clock for him, thank you.
I know sometime, learning right don't feel right sometime, y'all. So basically, I'm here for y'all now. I'm not here to criticize, critique nothing. How can I be of service to you all? We're losing too many kids, you know? So whatever program we need to do to implement, helping the youth, and also feeling back a community as a whole, I'm at child discretion, you know? Like, I don't, I'm not, I don't care about what everybody is and ain't doing. What are we going to do? So therefore, I'm asking y'all, what can I do for y'all at this point, all right? Because I've been to enough funerals, over seventy last year, five this year, all right? So I don't want to repeat the trend of last year. So whatever I can do for you all to help on any level and every level, I'm here, all right? Thank y'all for continuing to do what y'all do together. That's the only way we can do this, y'all, like, together. So once we figure that part out, I don't have an ego, and I'm not intimidated by nobody, all right? Let's make this happen. I will see it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Willis. George Mahdi, and then Michael Burnside.
Yeah, George Mahdi, Neighborhood Unity and Merge. I think a program like this is sorely needed. And, you know, it's a step in the right direction. For so long, the local population, workforce population has suffered over the generations. You know, they have been neglected. You know, after Hurricane Katrina, you know, we couldn't get people into the workforce. And that's probably why we have the problems of crime and delinquency and so forth today. Because that population, the large urban unskilled black male labor pool that's local, has not been addressed. And, you know, programs such as this should address that. They need entry-level positions. They need career ladders, you know? These things have to be done from the bureaucratic part of of it because, you know, they don't have a choice in the matter. They don't have the opportunities in the matter. You have kids living across the river that can't get to these jobs, you know? You know, gentrification has pushed them to the margin, pushed them to the east, pushed them across the river. And, you know, I've been working with a lot of young men, you know, career age, you know, apprentice age men, young, black young men, who can't get over here to work. There's nothing for them. And you brought outside help, outside contractors to do these housing and and workforce developments after Katrina. And that's why they're the lost and forgotten elements and segments of our society.
That's your time, Mr.
Who have nothing to do and and have no opportunities. So where does it start? Where's the start with you, with y'all?
Thank you, Mr. Mahdi.
Develop these people and put, you know.
A thousand jobs. Please help people to fill them.
Okay, well.
It's a thousand. It's the Office of Workforce Development of the mayor. You could go over there now and find out what they're going to do to advertise. We can only do exactly as we're doing. People criticize the council and the mayor to say that there's no opportunities for you. There are. There are a thousand being created today after this vote. Tell them about it.
Okay, we're going to do that.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you, Councilmember Green. Thank you, Mr. Mahdi. Councilmember Thomas, do you want to speak now or after Mr. Burnside?
After Mr. Burnside.
Okay. Come on up, Mr. Burnside.
I'm in a strange situation. I didn't understand Mr. Monte to be attacking anything. I understood him to be.
He asked me what to do, and I suggested that he tell me.
No, it wasn't directed to you, Mr. Green. It really wasn't. It really, I'm not trying to attack you at all. I heard Mr. Monte say that this is a solution to a problem that is real. And it is a partial solution to a real problem. And he discussed gentrification pushing people to the edges. And we're going to have bus rapid transit trying to bring them back into the middle, right? So Mr. Monte's point is that we need more of this, right? That this is a good thing, right? And my point to you is it should be advertised by us. There should be a dozen people down here willing to talk for fifteen minutes about things like the number of hours the kids are going to have, the amount of money the kids are going to make, the dates that these jobs become available, when and how do you apply. Outreach becomes important. Engaging with people through the medium of television where they do watch us becomes an opportunity, right? This is a good thing, and yet we hide our light under a bush door, and we should not. We have a thousand five hundred millions. If you count millions of dollars, we have one thousand five hundred of them flowing out of the city in the course of the year. That's four million dollars a day. We're giving two million dollars to this this year, which is good and correct. But next year, there should be a dream to put four million dollars here, and there should be a plan backed by staff to make that happen. Whether the administration does it or not, you are the branch of the people, and you are fat, you are responsible financially for the expenditure of funds.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Burnside. Councilmember Thomas?
First of all, thank you to Councilmember Green for always highlighting the positive and the opportunities. I think what Mr. Mahdi was saying, I just want to add some foundation to his comments. If we can remember when when Mr. Miller was here with the NOLA Business Alliance in the Landry administration, they did the study on the unemployment for black men, even though they were certified, educated, had transportation, and they could pass the drug test. It showed that even in what was at one time considered a economy that was thriving, fifty-four percent of them were unemployed. We begin to celebrate when that went down to the high forties. It's still not enough. If you look at the other statistics that deal with per capita income, especially as it relates to black men and boys, our Hispanic brothers and sisters and our Asian brothers and sisters have not only doubled, but they've tripled their per capita income. So I think the point was, especially given the fact that the Brookings Institute report has said that if we don't begin to target and boys, and that's not saying that you lead any any other group out, but if you don't begin to target black men and boys, it goes in line to the McKinnon Report that was done in the early nineties on the state of that group. It goes in line with the Calvin Mackey and former Congressman Richmond report that was done for the state of Louisiana in the early two thousand. So I think Mr. Mahdi was talking about was the intentionality at that group, especially especially when you look at the crime statistics, not just here, but but that represent that group throughout the country. There has to be something more intentional to target to target black men and boys.
Thank you, Councilmember Thomas. I think the other thing to highlight, too, about the Youth Summer Jobs Program is that the jobs pay fifteen dollars an hour. So that's a, that's a great pay for our our youth. Okay, so with that, do you have any online public comment or need it? Nope. All right. We've already done the amendment. So now this is the motion on the ordinance as amended. Then seconded by Councilmember Green. Seven yeas, no nays.
We're now on top of page thirty-three. We have a legislative grouping. Ordinance calendar number thirty-four thousand twenty-one by Councilmembers Moreno and Morel. An ordinance to amend ordinance number twenty-nine thousand two sixty-six. MCS as amended, entitled an ordinance, providing an operating budget of expenditures for the city of New Orleans for the year twenty twenty-three to appropriate funds to the Mayor's Office of Workforce Development within miscellaneous programs to provide funding for an increase in youth participants and otherwise to provide with respect there too. And there is an amendment. Amendment to ordinance calendar number thirty-four thousand twenty-one by Councilmember Moreno. On page two, line eight, replace the figure one million nine hundred thousand with two million one hundred thousand. On page two, line nine, replace the figure one million nine hundred thousand with two million one hundred thousand. On page two, line thirteen, replace the figure one million nine hundred thousand with two million one hundred thousand. On page two, line fourteen, replace the figure one million nine hundred thousand with two million one hundred thousand. Councilmembers, do y'all want to be all added to this ordinance also?
Going to say that, yeah. Thank you, Madam Clerk, for adding everyone. Members, this is just a companion appropriation ordinance dealing with the expenditure. So I'll make a motion on the amendment first. Seconded by Councilmember Green. Six yeas, no nays. We'll just wait for the machine. And this is this is the the motion to adopt as the ordinance is now amended. Six yeas, no nays. Thank you.
Okay, councilmembers, we need to go back to page fourteen and do ordinance calendar number thirty-four thousand twenty-five by Councilmembers Jeruso, Green, Moreno, and Thomas. By request, an ordinance to amend and reordain ordinance number twenty-nine thousand two seventy-two MCS entitled an ordinance, providing a capital budget for the year twenty twenty-three to effect the following change to the twenty twenty-three. to effect the following change to the 2023 capital budget, to deappropriate funds from the chief administrative office to the Department of Human Services, the Department of Property Management, the Department of Public Works, the Department of Sanitation, the Mosquito Termite and Rodent Control Board, and the New Orleans Recreation Development Commission. To appropriate funds to the chief administrative office, the Department of Health, the Department of Human Services, the Department of Parks and Parkways, the Department of Property Management, the Department of Public Works, the New Orleans Fire Department, the New Orleans Recreation Development Commission, and the Municipal Yard Harbor, and otherwise to provide with respect there too. And there is an amendment. The amendment is by Councilmember Jeruso by request. On page two, line 37, delete the words Department of Sanitation. Number two, on page two, line 38, delete the words 2019 Bond Funds. Number three, on page two, line 39, delete the words 60037 Sanitation Field Office and Warehouse 204,167. Online, on page, number four, on page two, line 40, delete the words 2021 Bonds. Number five, on page two, line 41, delete the words 60071 Public Facilities 2,800,000. Number six, on page two, line 42, delete the words Department of Sanitation total Number seven, on page eight, line 58, delete the figure 16,358,580 and replace with 13,354,413. Number eight, on page four, line 83, delete the figure 485,638 and replace with 281,471. Number nine, on page four, line 85, delete the figure 3,896,967 and replace with 1,96,967. Number 10, on page four, line 95, delete the figure 11,373,208 and replace with 8,369,041. Number 11, on page five, line 124, delete the figure 62,132,325 and replace.
It should be 59,128,158. They have the dollar sign in the wrong place, so can we just make that technical correction?
Yes, we'll do a technical.
I think we can.
That is the amendment.
Thank you. Members, the clerk has read the amendment. Does anybody have any questions to see capital projects is here to answer anything or any question? All right, seeing none, I don't have any comment cards on this. So I'll move for approval of the amendment as read, seconded by Councilmember Harris. Please blow your machines. Five yeas, no nays. Now on the ordinance as amended. Wait about a second, seconded by Councilmember Harris. Five yeas, no nays, and ordinance is amended. Thank you very much, thank you.
We're now on top of page 34. We have ordinance calendar number 34,043 has been deferred to March 9. Ordinance calendar number 34,044 has been deferred to March 9. At the bottom of the page, ordinance calendar number 34,045 by council member Thomas, and ordinance to amend and reordain section 162-1656 and 162-1669 of the Code of the City of New Orleans to increase the total number of pedicabs, CPNCs, to be issued to align section 162-1656 with the transfer of ground transportation administration to the Department of Public Works as established via ordinance calendar number 33,245 to update the code citation within section 162-1669 and otherwise to provide with respect there too.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. This ordinance increases the amount of issuing of pedicab CPNCs from 45 to 65 in the expectation and hope that it would allow for more DB participation. The current CPCs are held by three non-DBE companies, each operating a maximum of 50 pedicabs. Thus, there's currently in this fast-growing industry, no DB participation. And the good standing exception for renewed charter, chapter 162-1664 prevents compliance with the DB requirement established in the existing charter. The administration categorized ground transportation matters under Public Works. So this amendment is to be required to analysis and come through the Public Works Committee and aligns with that committee accordingly. So this is creating an opportunity, especially in a growing industry. We have one speaker right now, Mr. Jordan Michael. Comments from the council first, comment, Councilmember Morrell.
Thank you. When I had one of my recent coffee meet and greets, I got to meet with an individual who's in the pedicab industry. And this, I think, is pertinent because it could affect anyone else coming into it. There are tremendous amount of people operating completely illegal pedicabs throughout downtown New Orleans. And as we seek to increase the amount of CPNCs that we're offering, the complaint that was brought to my attention was that not only do we have illegal pedicabs, we have companies operating golf carts and a variety of other different means of transportation. When the holders of the pedicab CPNCs or similarly situated groups who abide by the law would complain to the city's ground transportation department, they say that there's nothing we can do about it, call the police. I think that there needs to be a hearing, probably in Public Works, to call ground transportation to task because even as we seek to increase the participation of DBs, if we're going to take the position that we are going to make people go through a process to get CPNCs to operate in an industry, and we're going to let individuals who choose to never operate within the law and operate, like I said, many golf carts, many scooters, many motorcycles, all these different things in the downtown and CBD area, we are creating something that's worse than the Uber taxi cab problem. In that if we are going to decide we're going to regulate an industry, there has to be repercussions for groups to operate outside of it. And I mean, I hate to float the idea, but maybe they should be booting the golf carts. Because these are not groups who ever even sought to come to the council to get approval. They're just choosing to do whatever the hell they want. And we're just, and ground transportation is taking the position of, well, if we're not told we have to regulate it, we're not going to regulate it. And that's kind of a ridiculous position to hold. That's saying that if I am committing a crime, and the crime is not specifically spelled out in the statute, but is covered by the plain reading of the statute, if cops said, I'm just not going to enforce that, people would lose their minds. So I'm not in opposition to the ordinance. And obviously, I think that having more companies would probably be better, especially while the DB participation. But what I don't want to have is even more people in an industry where they have competition who are not following any laws and the city is allowing them to run amok, making profit without any of the overhead of CPNCs and the like. So I do think ground transportation needs to, for Public Works, to account for why they're allowing certain groups to operate completely illegally in competition with groups that we're trying to have more DB participation in.
A great, great, great comment and great segue. So I want to create an analogy and paint a picture. One thing we know that enforcement is an issue across the board. And it's to be close because one thing we know in this city, there are people who open businesses every day without occupational licenses. There are people who pop up, they don't go through the rigorous of the people who follow the laws, pay the taxes, and open up their business. But one thing we're not doing is we're not stopping new businesses from coming forward. There's also people who are legal haulers. They go to the tire shops, they have their permits. People pick up trash, they go to the dump. But we're still issuing them their permits if they do it legally. So you are absolutely correct. There has to be some balance in terms of enforcement. It is the only way we're going to create economic skills and market skills here that work to protect the people who do. Mr. Chairman, one other thing that, as I said, I'm going to commit is that while we do this, enforcement has to be across the board. And if we look at all those areas where we seem to be weak with enforcement, it has to be balanced, it has to be enforced for the ones who are doing it illegally to protect the people who are doing it the right way. Thank you. Mr. Jordan Michael.
Hey, y'all, how's it going? This actually feels pretty good. Sorry, this thing always every time, y'all. Can I just take this off the mic? Where Councilmember Morrell go? I have a couple of comments for his comments. Is he gone? Really? Okay, that's all right, I'll just say this on public record. First off, we're not talking about golf carts here, y'all. We're not talking about golf carts. And we're talking about enforcement that is not the issue here, we're talking about equity at hand. 35% are supposed to be DBs, there's no DB participation. When we talk about the enforcement of the rogues, I'm just going to address what he said because that's what he said. A lot of those people are just fed up with the current system. So they just do whatever they can. And we're talking about legality? Are you looking at a veteran small loan business by the state of Louisiana, right? You're looking at a disenfranchised business enterprise, infinite circle LLC, went through the whole process. I've done everything by the book. It took months to get to this point right here, completely shut out. Can't be raised, can't be lowered, you're out. We're talking about three people of color riding out there on cabs, y'all. Look at the tourism industry at large. It doesn't represent the city. It's transplants, it's white transplants, that's all right. It's just we got to think about how we represent the city and what story we tell here, right? And this system itself has created a myriad of labor issues. Those are buried out there, independent contractors, right? But exclusively right for one. Then we got tipsy and we got a whole bunch of other things that go into it. But this question is not about golf carts. And this question is not about enforcement, that's a different agenda, and I didn't really appreciate that. So I just want to say that real fast. This is about equity within the tourism industry. And there is no route there. Do everything right and you still can't get there. I'm running up on time here, but that, I'm sorry, I'm looking at this plaque and I think about stories and telling the history of the city. And knowing what happened at this, at this, at this stand right here so many years ago, to see this, to read this, to know someone sat here and fought for this. And I mean, that's what we should be looking at here. This fight doesn't end after this vote. This work does not end. We will have to go to the GTP hearing. There are more steps to this entire process. We can do this equitably, we can do this right, there needs to be a transparent process in that, and there needs to be a seat at the table. I agree with enforcement, and I agree that this can come to a happy conclusion where it benefits all parties and DB participation.
Thank you, Mike, thank you. Any other comments from Congress members? With that, a move adopted. Seconded by Councilmember Moreno, vote your machine. Six yeas, no nays, it's adopted.
We're now on top of page 35. Ordinance calendar number 34,046 has been deferred to April 20. At the bottom of the page, ordinance calendar number 34,047 by council member Jeruso by request, and ordinance to authorize the mayor of the city of New Orleans to enter into a new cooperative endeavor agreement with Lakeview Crime Prevention District to aid in crime prevention and to add to the security of district residents by providing for an increase in the presence of law enforcement personnel in the LCPD as more fully detailed in the CEA as Exhibit 1 and otherwise to provide with respect there too.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, move for approval. Seconded by Councilmember King. Five yeas, no nays, ordinance carries, thank you.
We're now on top of page 36. We have ordinance calendar number 34,048 by council member King by request, and ordinance authorizing the mayor of the city of New Orleans to enter into a cooperative endeavor agreement between the city of New Orleans and Total Community Action, Inc. for a term greater than one year for the public purpose of reducing food insecurity and improving the overall health of households in targeted low-income city neighborhoods at 1420 South Norman C Francis Parkway, New Orleans, Louisiana, 70125, as more fully set forth in a cooperative endeavor agreement titled Exhibit 1 and otherwise to provide with respect there too.
Thank you, Madam, thank you, Madam Clerk, a move for approval. Seconded by Councilmember Jeruso. Five yeas, no nays, thank you.
At the bottom of the page. We have ordinance calendar number 34,049 by council member Thomas by request, and ordinance authorizing the mayor of the city of New Orleans to enter into a cooperative endeavor agreement between the city of New Orleans and all these public defenders for a term greater than one year for the public purpose in assisting the OPD with providing legal services to indigenous persons in criminal proceedings within the city of New Orleans as more fully detailed in the cooperative endeavor agreement as Exhibit 8 and otherwise to provide with respect there too.
Procedure rules to continue the operations of the indigenous defender is for a term of five years. Seconded by Councilmember Green, vote your machines, please. Six yeas, no nays, it's adopted, thank you.
At the top of the page. We have ordinance calendar number 34,050 by council member King by request, and ordinance authorizing the mayor of the city of New Orleans to enter into a cooperative endeavor agreement between the city of New Orleans and the Arts Council of New Orleans for a term greater than one year to accomplish the public purpose of supporting the arts within the city, the community arts grant program as more fully detailed in a cooperative endeavor agreement as Exhibit 8 and otherwise to provide with respect there too.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, a move for approval. Properly seconded by Councilmember Harris. Five yeas, no nays, motion adopted, thank you.
At the bottom of the page. Ordinance calendar number 34,057 has been deferred to April 20 and referred to the Governmental Affairs Committee. On top of page 38, we have ordinance calendar number 34,058 by council member Thomas by request, and ordinance authorizing the mayor of the city of New Orleans to enter into a cooperative endeavor agreement between the city of New Orleans and the New Orleans Redevelopment Authority for a term greater than one year for the public purpose of the redevelopment of the former Six Flags Jazzland site in the city of New Orleans as more fully detailed in the cooperative endeavor agreement as Exhibit 8 and otherwise to provide with respect there too.
Finally, the CEA between the city, between Nora, the city, for the Jazzland development. This is a five-year agreement between the city and Nora to ensure that the site is brought back into commerce. It's designed to ensure that the property never again is blighted or follow. The CEA is part of the overall transaction structure that is sending the property from the IDB to the New Orleans Redevelopment Authority and entering into a long-term development agreement, agreement with the Bayou Phoenix team to rejuvenate this site. Nora will be the long-term public sector steward of this crucial site and its redevelopment. And with that, we have two speakers. We have Mr. Burnside, then Mr. Morgan. Mr. Burnside.
So I had the pleasure of coming up here and saying.
So I had the pleasure of coming up here and saying nice words a little while ago about the two million dollars that we're going to be, uh, using to help fund some summer jobs for some of our students, or a thousand of our, of our children. Two million dollars, uh, is going to impact a thousand lives and then they're going to in fact impact their parents' lives and their siblings' lives. I don't know how much money uh, is in the Six Flags Jazzland situation and I don't even know how to count the money. Right? But I do know a little bit about this situation with the old building for charity hospital, which is also owned by the state. My understanding is Nora's a state agency. So the old building at charity, uh, was owned by LSU Foundation, still is. The developer wanted to buy it. He wanted to pay cash money for it. The state said, no, we're not going to let you. We're going to make you lease this. So the result is the city of New Orleans doesn't get any property tax out of the old charity building. I don't think the state has the best interest of this city at heart. And the state has a lot of power and the city seems to be giving it more. I don't understand that. We already had this ITEP discussion about the port of New Orleans, right? It seems to be brutal that the government is a tool by which the rich get richer and the poor get poorer. I don't see an equity here. You know, if we're going to give ex-corporation, whether they're making edible oil or not, so much money, then we should give our kids that much money. Or if we're going to give Jazzland investors the opportunity to make a profit, then we should give our small pedicab operators the chance to make a profit. The idea that you have to be big in order to benefit from government is the ultimate destruction of a democratic government.
Thank you, Mr. Burnside. Mr. Harry Morgan.
I am Larry Morgan. Good evening to everybody in the house, including the council. I will try to make this short. My speech is mostly concerned what happened to Six Flags when it is developed. And well, like I predict, like I addressed it to you all in the, in the past, that the people who had took into consideration to clean up that area, they shall be given the full authority to run Six Flags because the reason is that the city has neglected it at that stage and the people in that community came together and made the magic happen which you, Oliver Thomas, was a part of and I salute you for it. You should make sure that all the people in that community runs every scenario of Six Flags because they aren't it. When Pointe Trane Beach exists, the people ran Pointe Trane Beach was the white folks. Lincoln Beach is their people time, our people time. Give them that authority. That is something that they are not begging, they're on it. And also I'd like to make known something else that I had addressed in the future on Mr. DeMare and the children. Our children is going to be instink in a workforce because you know why? Nobody cares. You would not bring industrial art back to the school. That's the honest salvation our children have in order to come into the future of the trade and the trade and that will exist in the future. You're locking them up. You're locking them out of trade, bringing industrial art back to them schools.
Thank you, Mr. Morgan. Anything else from the dais? Uh, with that, I move adoption. Second by Councilmember Harris, vote your machines, please.
This is great news, Councilman.
Uh, thank you. Uh, five yeas, no nays, and the ordinance on the CEA is adopted. It is, finally. Took some behind the scenes meeting.
At the bottom of the page, we have ordinance calendar number thirty-four thousand fifty-nine by Councilmembers Harris and Jeruso by request. An ordinance authorizing the mayor of the city of New Orleans to enter into a cooperative endeavor agreement between the city of New Orleans and the Louisiana Music and Heritage Experience, Inc. For a term greater than one year for the public purpose of the preservation and education of the history of music in the city of New Orleans as more fully detailed in the cooperative endeavor agreement as Exhibit A and otherwise to provide with respect there too.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Uh, the CEA between the Louisiana Music and Heritage Experience and the city creates a pathway to provide initial funding needed to develop a museum. The museum will provide music education, partner with schools, lift up our culture bears and create dozens of well-paying jobs in the heart of District B. I'm excited about this project and that the city can be a partner to help move things forward. Is there any public comment? Any online comment? All right, I'll move. Second by Councilmember Jeruso. Thank you for co-authoring. Five yeas.
Are we ready to go in executive session?
I'll, I'll move that we go into executive session for one o'clock.
I'm a, I'm a reading into the record while they're getting up. We're going back to page, page twenty-two. We have executive session. Pursuant to Louisiana Revised Statute forty-two sixteen and forty-two seventeen eight-two, the council of the city of New Orleans may convene in the executive session during this regular meeting on February sixteenth, twenty twenty-three for the purpose of discussing the following litigation. Hegnell Stark et al. versus the city of New Orleans, case number two nineteen dash CB dash thirteen seven seven three. United States District Court for the Eastern District of Louisiana, Judge Ivan L. R. LaMell. Go ahead, Councilmember.
Thank you. I'm going to move to enter into executive session pursuant to clerk red. Second by Councilmember Thomas. Thank you. Need one more yay. Five yeas, no nays, and we stand in executive session. Thank you.
Council members, are we ready to reestablish our quorum?
Yes, Madam Clerk.
Are we ready to warm it up in here? It's freezing.
Councilmember Thomas. Councilmember Green. Councilmember Morell.
Present.
Councilmember Moreno.
Present.
Councilmember King. Councilmember Harris. Councilmember Jeruso. We have seven members. We have a quorum. We're now going to go to the top of page thirty-nine. We have ordinance calendar number thirty-four thousand sixty-two as being deferred to March ninth. At the bottom of the page, ordinance calendar number thirty-four thousand sixty-three by councilmember Green. An ordinance to amend and reordain section fifty-four dash three fifty-seven of the Code of the City of New Orleans to increase the penalty for not reporting lost and stolen firearms, and otherwise to provide with respect there too. And there is an amendment by councilmember Jeruso. Number one, on page one, section one, replace lines two through three with the following. A. The owner of a lost or stolen firearm shall report the loss or theft to the New Orleans Police Department within forty-eight hours after discovery of the loss or theft. Number two, on page one, section one, replace lines four through five with the following. B. It shall be the responsibility of the New Orleans Police Department to document the loss or theft, including if known, the serial number of the lost or stolen firearm. That is the amendment.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. This is a friendly amendment. The ordinance is currently written, supplies that the reports and responsibilities belong to an NOPD officer. My amendment simply makes it that the report or the responsibility is to the department as a whole. Because as we've all talked about repeatedly, there aren't enough police officers and perhaps civilians within the department or technology can help with these issues.
Thank you, and as the author, I am pleased to accept that friendly amendment. And I've moved that we would vote on that amendment. It's been seconded by councilmember Jeruso. You probably should have motioned. Sorry about that. We have at least three, we have four, we have five yays, no nays. So that motion, that amendment is adopted. The motion in... Does someone say wait?
Adam Clark.
You can go with your vote now, councilmember.
Well, I'm gonna... Yes, right. So I'm just describing the, um... What we're about to do now is to vote on the motion the ordinance has amended. And this is, it speaks for itself. It would have been on the agenda of the council's criminal justice committee. I was gonna ask that the rules be suspended, but that meeting, of course, which was a good meeting, lasted until the early evening hours. And you all have gotten this in advance. It's been reviewed and amended by councilmember Jeruso. At this time, we have one comment card, and I'll ask Mr. Michael Burnside to come forward with this particular ordinance.
Hi, guys. My original intent was to come and say thank you, so I will start with saying thank you. With the amendment, I want to raise up an idea. His comment about technology lurks in the back of the way I think. Yahoo News had an interesting feed the other day. We have an F-16 in the U.S. Air Force that flew for seventeen hours on artificial intelligence. Didn't even have a pilot. So, um, technology exists. It's out there. And I think one of the problems with the NOPD is it does a lot of inefficient activity, including paperwork. So it would be nice that if you pass this here today, that somebody somewhere put a little note and say, a year from now, maybe we can come back and try to rearrange this so that the report can be done at three-one-one, whether it be a little automated thing. It would send it to some little automated computer somewhere so that if somebody does find a gun, then they can go to that database and say, has this gun been reported? And you don't take, I will exaggerate slightly, hours of an NOPD officer's time to sort paperwork. Thank you very much.
Members, in a nutshell, this ordinance amends the city code to increase the penalty for not reporting lost and stolen firearms from a maximum penalty of two-fifty, which exists at present for the first offense, to a minimum penalty of five hundred dollars. This would be very helpful to the police department. We know that stolen guns fuel crime. That nearly one out of five vehicles, vehicle burglaries in twenty-twenty-two involve the firearm being stolen. We certainly need our citizens to be more responsible relative to their weapons. But if their weapons are taken, it helps the public, and it also helps the New Orleans Police Department to know that those weapons have been taken. And it may even help to expand the charges on someone who is engaged in another crime. So that being the case, I would move, and I saw that councilman Jeruso seconded, approval of calendar, ordinance calendar number thirty-four zero six street. Members, please vote your machines. I see six yays. I see seven yays, no nays. Thank you for your support. Please, gun owners, be more responsible, or be as responsible as possible with your firearm. Thank you.
On top of page forty, we have motion M twenty-two five sixteen deferred to five twenty-five and referred to the Governmental Affairs Committee. Resolution R twenty-two five twenty-nine has been withdrawn. On top of page forty-one, motion M twenty-three sixty-three by councilmembers Jeruso, Moreno, Morell, Green, and Thomas. Approving the amendments to the Classified Pay Plan, Sewage and Water Board Rule Four, Section thirteen, Holiday Pay, as adopted by the Civil Service Commission at its meeting of January twentieth, twenty-three in accordance with Article ten, Section ten of the Constitution of Louisiana, to be effective February nineteenth, twenty-twenty-three.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. All these matters were discussed but not voted on at the last budget committee meeting. A move for approval, seconded by councilmember Green. Six yays, no nays. Motion passes.
At the bottom of the page, we have motion M twenty-three sixty-four by councilmembers Jeruso, Moreno, Morell, Green, and Thomas. Approving the amendments to the Classified Pay Plan, Fire Rule Four, Section one point three, Pay Plan, as adopted by the Civil Service Commission at its meeting of January twentieth, twenty-twenty-three in accordance with Article ten, Section ten of the Constitution of Louisiana, to be effective February nineteenth, twenty-twenty-three.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Move for approval. Seconded by councilmember Harris. Six yays, no nays.
We're now gonna go to page forty-two. We have motion M twenty-three sixty-five by councilmembers Jeruso, Moreno, Morell, Green, and Thomas. Approving the amendments to the Classified Pay Plan, HDLC, VCC, New Classification, as adopted by the Civil Service Commission at its meeting of January twentieth, twenty-twenty-three in accordance with Article ten, Section ten of the Constitution of Louisiana, to be effective February nineteenth, twenty-twenty-three.
Move for approval. Seconded by councilmember Green. Six yays, no nays.
At the bottom of the page, we have motion M twenty-three sixty-six by councilmembers Jeruso, Moreno, Morell, Green, and Thomas. Approving the amendments to the Classified Pay Plan, Health EMS Special Rate of Pay, as adopted by the Civil Service Commission at its meeting of January twentieth, twenty-twenty-three in accordance with Article ten, Section ten of the Constitution of Louisiana, to be effective February nineteenth, twenty-twenty-three.
Thank you. Move for approval. Seconded by Vice President Moreno. Six yays, no nays.
We're now on top of page forty-three. We have motion M twenty-three sixty-seven by councilmembers Jeruso, Moreno, Morell, Green, and Thomas. Approving the amendments to the Classified Pay Plan, Safety and Permits, Title Changes, Hiring Rates, and New Classification, Building Plan Reviewer, as adopted by the Civil Service Commission at its meeting of January twentieth, twenty-twenty-three in accordance with Article ten, Section ten of the Constitution of Louisiana, to be effective February nineteenth, twenty-twenty-three.
Move for approval. Seconded by Vice President Moreno. Six yays, no nays.
At the bottom of the page, we have motion M twenty-three sixty-eight by councilmembers Jeruso, Moreno, Morell, Green, and Thomas. Approving the amendment to the Classified Pay Plan, Front Quarter Supplemental Police Patrol Program, New Special Rate of Pay, Police, as adopted by the Civil Service Commission at its meeting of January twentieth, twenty-twenty-three in accordance with Article ten, Section ten of the Constitution of Louisiana, to be effective February nineteenth, twenty-twenty-three.
Move for approval. Seconded by Vice President Moreno. Six yays, no... Oh, seven. Seven yays.
We're now on top of page forty-four. We have ordinance calendar number, I mean, motion M twenty-three sixty-nine by councilmembers Jeruso, Moreno, Morell, Green, and Thomas. Approving the amendments to the Classified Pay Plan, Parental Leave Rule One, Section One Definitions, as adopted by the Civil Service Commission at its meeting of January twentieth, twenty-twenty-three in accordance with Article ten, Section ten of the Constitution of Louisiana, to be effective February nineteenth, twenty-twenty-three.
Motion to approve. Seconded by councilmember Tom.
We have, over here, sorry. We have four online comments.
Yes, ma'am. Before we vote, let's get to those.
First comment is from Lee M. Abbott with the New Orleans City Workers Organizing Committee. Dear councilmembers, I write as a parent, a city worker, and a member of the New Orleans City Workers Organizing Committee to ask that you please vote yes to expand paid parental leave for all four thousand-plus city employees. An expanded paid family leave policy could help recruit and retain city employees in a time where we're struggling to fill positions at City Hall. Additionally, paid family leave can help with child development, reduce infant mortality, increase gender equity in the home, decrease the gender pay gap, and improve other social and health outcomes for children and parents. Research suggests that taking annual leave can improve employee health outcomes by improving cardiovascular health, reducing stress, and improving sleep, which can lead to an increase in workplace productivity. New Orleans City Workers Organizing Committee has been very concerned with employee retention, rising cost of living, and widening social inequality in our city and country. We supported increasing the base pay to fifteen dollars for all city employees and city contracted workers, and we support expanding annual leave for city employees to twenty days. We believe that in this time, when retention problems are leaving our, are leaving our crucial city services understaffed, it is the obligation of our elected officials to signal their commitment to reinvest in the public sector, the sector that serves and employs the people of the city. We can do that by promoting improved wages, generous benefits, and strong union agreements between the city and the union workers have chosen to join. Expanding parental leave is an excellent first step in that direction, and we at NOC WOC commend the council for advancing this proposal. Expanding both annual and parental leave could increase employee retention, increase employee productivity, and increase workplace morale. Please vote yes to expand parental leave to twelve weeks. The next comment is from Hamilton Simmons Jones with the New Orleans Campaign for Grade Level Reading. I want to applaud the council for your leadership in ensuring the city adopts a more progressive paid family leave policy for its employees. This policy is in line with the current policy at the federal level and reflects the fact that a mounting body of evidence shows the value of this time for the health of both, of both parents and baby. The New Orleans Campaign for Grade Level Reading and our partners have worked tirelessly to help ensure children meet the critical milestones of reading on grade level by third grade. Research has shown how important early childhood development is for children to achieve this milestone. Providing this time for moms and dads to establish secure attachment with their child without having to worry about how they pay bills forms a critical foundation for the child's success and both parents' mental health. I wish I had had the opportunity to spend this amount of time with my children. I wish I had had the opportunity to spend this amount of time with my children after their birth. Too often dads just don't get this time, even though it can make such a difference for mom, the baby, and the parents' relationship in what can be both a joyful but also stressful time following the birth of a child. Thank you for your leadership on this important issue. Michael Williamson with the United Way of Southeast Louisiana. Says on behalf of United Way of Southeast Louisiana, I encourage you to vote yes to support the expansion of paid family medical leave for the city of New Orleans employees. In New Orleans, perish well over fifty percent of households don't earn enough money to afford a basic survival budget. Or in other terms, they live below what we call the ALIS, Asset Limited Income Constrained Employee threshold. We all know people who are ALIS. ALIS workers, workers keep our city clean, fix our streets, and make our quality of life possible, yet do not earn enough to support their own families. ALIS households are forced to make tough choices such as deciding between quality childcare or paying the rent, which have long-term consequences, not only for ALIS but for our entire city. ALIS workers are less likely to receive benefits such as health insurance, paid time off, family leave, or retirement benefits. If the city expands paid medical leave to more employees, more ALIS households will gain stability and face fewer difficult decisions over work and family, ultimately keeping more residents employed and family cared for in a manner in which they deserve. The last comment is from Keith Liederman from Clover, formerly the Kingsley House. I urge passage of the motion to expand family, paid family leave. An abundance of evidence shows multiple benefits of paid parental leave, including family health and well-being, workplace performance, and productivity, employee retention, and overall organizational health. It is also, it also has a major positive impact on the overall economy. Let's keep New Orleans moving in the right direction as a leader for paid family leave. Thank you.
Thank you. It's current. All right, as moved second in. Yep, six zero. Thank you.
We have resolution R twenty-three, seventy, has been deferred to March the ninth. At the bottom of the page, we have motion twenty, twenty-three, seventy-two by Councilmember Harris directing the City Planning Commission to conduct a public hearing to consider a zoning change from H U M U Historic Urban Neighborhood Mixed Use District to H U R D two Historic Urban Two-Family Residential District on the five hundred block of Second Street and the five hundred block of Third Street.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. This motion directs CPC to hold a public hearing to consider the zoning of the five hundred block of Second Street and the five hundred block of Third Street in the Irish Channel. These are purely residential neighborhoods, but because of H U M U zoning, they're becoming overrun with STRs. My office checked with CPC in advance, and we believe that lining up these blocks with the surrounding residential zoning makes sense. I have one in-person comment from Sam Levine. And just to remind, reminder, comments are two minutes.
Yeah, I'll give this quick. Sam Levin, seventeen, twelve Sonia Street. My understanding of this is that there will be an NPP with this zoning change, and so my question is why are we having an NPP for this zoning change? But a very similar proposed zoning change, which is the next agenda item in a much larger area that affects much more people, we're waiving an NPP. I just wanted to have an answer.
We are waiving the NPP. There are two public meetings required for this item. Thank you.
Understood. Thanks.
Any online comments? All right. I'll move. Seconded by Council, Vice President Moreno. Five, six yeas. Thank you.
We're now on the top of page forty-five. We have motion M twenty-three, seventy-seven by Councilmember Harris directing the City Planning Commission to conduct a public hearing to consider a zoning map amendment from an MU two High-Intensity Mixed-Use District to an H U R M two Multi-Family Residential District in the entirety of the currently zoned MU two within the boundaries of the Ponchatrain Expressway, South Saratoga Street, Felicity Street, Carondelet Street.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Last meeting, we passed a motion to have CPC hold a public hearing on the zoning around the Brown's Dairy STR site. In order to expedite the process and ensure a timely hearing, I am falling up with this motion to waive the NPP as the process already requires two public, two public meetings, CPC and the council. We have several comments from the public. Do we have online comment as well? How many online comments? Okay, let's start with Michael Burnside. And a reminder, two minutes each.
So Ms. Harris is very generous and kind to me, and I find biting her hand very unpleasant. I also am very grateful for her leadership in this. I don't think the situation at Brown's Dairy is a model for anybody, actually. But I have to say that I've missed out on an NPP. There's some sort of development going on at seventeen hundred to seventeen fifty Simon Boulevard. And I only found out about it through Zach Smith's newsletter. And I never got any kind of notification for an NPP for that, and I am within three hundred feet of that. So I didn't know what was going on. And my neighborhood didn't bother telling me because maybe they didn't get any mail either. I certainly didn't ask them because I didn't know about it. So the NPP is sort of more important than just giving a chance for people to gripe. It gives us an idea that we can have power and affect change in our relationship to our government. So Councilperson Jeruso has advocated for MPPs in situations where they did not exist before. And I supported him in that. So I'm in an unfortunate situation of saying that I would have preferred an NPP for this as well because people don't always come here to talk, and they might choose to go to a nearby venue like a church or something and have a chance to talk. I understand sometimes process kills. And when people don't want things to die, they they've been processed ethically and correctly, but at the same time, process exists. This is gonna be a pathetic thing to say out loud, to give hope to the hopeless.
Thank you. Joanne Monner. Joanne? Joanne opposes. Ron?
Ron Lazell, twenty-one, thirty-one Benville Street, Weber Consulting. I am paid representative. I'm strongly opposed to motion M twenty-three, seventy-seven. I would like to stress that I am not opposed to motion M twenty-three, forty-six, which was approved at the January nineteenth council meeting in order for CPC to do a study. What is the difference? In today's motion, the council is using a small loophole in the CZO that allows the city council to waive the NPP requirements. I am requesting that you withdraw today's motion and allow for the NPP to take place. Going back in May of last year, and there's zoning dock at seventeen twenty-two, Councilmember Jeruso had gone through a process of increasing the amount of NPP, of the NPP program. For any amendment to a conditional use, any institutional master plan within the ECC Educational Campus and MCC Medical, MC Medical Campus District and IZDs and overlay districts. The comments made by the members at that meeting are as follows. Councilmember Harris, you said, I agree that there needs to be more neighborhood outreach beyond neighborhood associations, including in churches, including in cultural centers. Anytime we have a neighborhood participation program, I encourage the folks that come before me to reach out to everyone in the neighborhood, not just the neighborhood association. And Councilmember Jeruso, you also spoke about the importance of NPP, and unfortunately, I'm running out of time, so I gotta go quick. I am at, what's my objection? That that the city council continues to bypass the NPP program when it's their motions, but no one else gets to do that. And it's not fair. I can guarantee you that people want to be heard at an NPP meeting, not at two regular public meetings. We need to have an input between the the members of the community and the leadership to work through these issues. And I would actually like to see the CZO change where this council can no longer waive MPPs, period. Thank you.
That's your time. Sam Levine.
How's it going? Sam Levin, seventeen, twelve Sonia Street. I would like to know even why we're proposing to downzone this neighborhood that's been mixed use for a hundred and seventy-four years. When you first introduced this motion in January, you claimed it was to stop future STR development, which you've successfully done with the IZD at the last meeting. But even before the IZD, this proposal was way too broad. It's gonna impact all commercial uses in the neighborhood, everything from the auto shops to the winery and everything in between. But also kill the chance at a new life for any of the currently vacant storefronts that are desperate to be redeveloped, not to be made illegal. These commercial spaces are not just on OC Haley. They're located throughout the neighborhood on Rampart, Barone, Carondelet, Lemnia, U Terp, MLK, Thalia, and Clayo. This neighborhood is truly mixed use, and it has been since eighteen forty-nine when the Dryad Market opened. In the nineteen twenties, it was known on the Dryad, Dryad Street Shopping District where Jewish, Irish, and African-American merchants and shoppers that weren't welcome other parts of the city came. Only a few years ago, the city invested in a street beautification project to increase foot and bike, bike traffic. And Mayor Landry was quoted that he wanted that to trigger more development in the area at the time. Cafe Reconcile and the Youth Empowerment Project, Project, use commercial spaces to educate and mentor young people and provide workforce training. The Merchants and Business Association and Nora both described this area as a commercial corridor. It's a Louisiana Main Streets community and a cultural products district, both of which are exclusively for commercial and mixed-use areas. I can go on and on with examples, but I don't have much time left. The point is, the story and history of this neighborhood cannot be told without the commercial spaces in it. I've spoken with over a dozen neighbors, and I've yet to find a single one that supports the downzoning. So again, I ask, why are we downzoning this neighborhood? And even more so, why do we want to forego the MPP? Why don't we want to hear the voices of the business owners, tenants, and stakeholders in the neighborhood? Thank you.
Mr. Spencer?
How's the council doing? My name is Sadat Spencer. I'm, I'm a real estate developer in, in Central City. I've been a developer for twenty years and, and have invested a considerable amount in this neighborhood. This, this Boulevard was named after Aretha Castle Haley, and the history of it was that she, she boycotted it because it was a commercial area that that black people couldn't shop in these areas. In this area, when I was growing up, it was called Black Canal Street. And historically, it has always been a commercial area. It has always been frequented. It is, it is like the jewel of Central City when it, in, in terms of the way that it looks aesthetically and in terms of the amount of money that was invested in it. Private and public. I personally have developed lot seventeen oh one, which it was designed to help entrepreneurs to, to have kind of like a low threshold to, to open up their businesses. With, with the proposed zoning change, it would, to, to residential, it would almost make like a coffee shop non-conforming, which would be illegal. I think that to make this area from commercial to, to residential would be like a gross injustice to over like a hundred and fifty years of history of being commercial in this area.
Thank you. Mr. Spencer, let me be clear. This is a study for the CPC to determine what is the proper zoning, whether it's mixed-use commercial. I don't see this going purely residential. I don't think the CPC is gonna come back with that. So this is a study to provide us with information about how this will be zoned. This is not a change to the zoning.
This is, no, I understand that this is the process. This is the process.
This is the process.
We couldn't make a change without you having a study, all right? So we need the study to
We need the study to make sure that our neighborhoods are protected from overrun by STRs. That's the point of the study.
I think that, I think that you had addressed the STR on the last meeting. So this is affecting the commercial nature of this. So I'm not opposing the ban on the STR. What I'm opposing is taking this from a commercial area, which is clearly
Which is not gonna happen. This will allow CPC to create a more nuanced zoning regime in this area. We're not taking this from commercials. So I don't, I don't know, I don't know who is putting that out there, but that's not gonna happen.
But the proposed zoning is what? R M, H U R M, two, that's, that's residential. I mean, that's what it is.
Again, it's a study for a more nuanced zoning regime.
For residential.
For, for both, for both.
Okay, so.
And I'm happy to talk with you or have my staff speak with you offline, so we can continue.
So, so the CPC have done a study, and I think it's coined under the the Main Street award that Aretha Castle Haley and, 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 and they outline like why it's commercial. The Boulevard received millions of dollars, even, even affordable housing development that's under construction right now. All of this is based on this area being commercial. None of this stuff would exist, either public or private dollars, without this area being zoned. But it is. We have at least twenty other business owners that have a considerable amount of property in this, in this neighborhood that wasn't aware of this meeting. So I request that we withdraw this NPP thing to, to allow the other business owners and, and, and stakeholders in this neighborhood to have a voice in this.
Thank you. I appreciate it, Mr. Spencer. Ms. Chavez.
Good afternoon. My name is Jewel Chavez, and I am a property owner and business owner at sixteen twenty-three Aretha Castle Haley Boulevard. I am here today in opposition to the council's motion to waive the neighborhood participation in the process to downzone the area, including Aretha Castle Haley Boulevard, for commercial zoning to residential. While we appreciate the council's response to the detrimental takeover of short-term rentals, however, the motion to include the historic Aretha Castle Haley Boulevard in this effort is short-sighted. As both a business owner and property owner on the Boulevard, I have invested several hundreds of thousands of dollars over the last decades for the revitalization of this community. There have been several other extremely beneficial investments to this corridor, including the city's own Main Street Resilience Plan. For over a century, this corridor has always been a home to entrepreneurship, commerce, and economic advancement. Zoning change would limit continued economic growth for the neighborhood and the business. So I am requesting the withdrawal of the MPP, and I, I would like Councilmember Harris to, if you could explain more about the MPP process and why it's being withdrawn.
Okay, well, have my staff come talk to you. Ms. Armstrong.
Good afternoon. My name is Tanda Armstrong, and I'm an owner and business owner and a property owner at thirteen thirty-two Aretha Castle Haley. I don't like to speak publicly, but I thought I had to come today because this directly, directly affected my business and my property there. So I'm here to oppose the request to waive the MPP because I didn't know about it. A lot of my neighbors didn't know about it until someone called me and told me this is what's going on. And I'm like, what? How can they? How can they do this without letting us know? And I know legally, I read that you can. However, I do think that everybody that have a stakehold on Aretha Castle Haley specifically I'm speaking about should be allowed to speak and to voice and to let us and let you guys know why we think that we shouldn't change the zoning. And because actually what downzoning would, you know, it would, I guess, devalue our property if I can't rent to whom I want to and business they would like to have in it. So, yeah, so that's why I'm here today. So we need to let everybody have a voice. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Bruno, Nick Bruno?
Afternoon. Nick Bruno, seventeen thirty-six Thalia Street. I'm a property and business owner in the subject MU two district, which you guys are considering downzoning to, from MU two to H U R M two. Motion twenty-three, seventy-seven represents the city council's effort to circumvent the neighborhood participation process in its desire to downzone OC Haley and its surrounds. As you are well aware, the NPP process would require the city to hold public hearings and gather feedback from residents and business owners in the area. Property owners, business owners, people who live and work in this district should have the right to input before such a massive change would take place.
the right to input before such a massive change would take place. And I do say the word massive intentionally. What is proposed from the motion 2346 to H U R M two represents altering a historically misused district, which includes a store commercial corridor of O C Haley Boulevard and turning it into the H U R M two zone. This H U R M two is a zone that's only allowable commercial uses by right are adult daycares, child daycares, private residential recreational facilities, whatever that means. That's it. Even in neighborhood commercial, even a neighborhood commercial establishment would require a conditional use in this proposed zoning. In light of the proposed sea change in land use for the neighborhood, why are we being denied an N P P where those of us who are stakeholders in the neighborhood and other community residents can gather and provide input on the future of our neighborhood? One thing we do recognize is that this motion to downzone the areas in response to the recent spotlight on the Brown's Dairy. However, what I cannot seem to understand is the need to waive the N P P. At the February 2nd hearing, an I Z D was placed prohibiting commercial short term rentals in the district for up to a year. Why do we need to bypass the N P P? There is absolutely no rush to push through a massive zoning change when the thing you have stated you're trying to protect is already prohibited. The CPC is staffed with bright, dedicated, and hardworking professionals who I know will approach any zoning change with a level headed application of urban planning principles.
That's your time. Wrap up, please.
Then I'd say, please, I humbly ask you to not vote, to vote against M 23277. Please bear in mind that a vote against M 2377 is a vote for transparency and community input in land use.
Thanks. Ciara?
Good afternoon. My name is Ciara Sheney. I'm speaking on behalf of Ashe Cultural Arts Center, our Chief Equity Officer, Asali Divine Ecclesiastes, who wish she could join us today, center regards. In response to this motion, we're elevating the impacts this will have on the corridor. As mentioned, since its early years, O C Haley, formerly Dryad Street, has been rooted in entrepreneurship, activism, and economic opportunity. It is one of the few points of entry for black small businesses, often excluded from more economically thriving white commercial quarters, where a history of incentives and subsidies exists that black business owners have not been afforded. We see this in the 2% share of the economy black businesses are restricted to. Given the area's historic relevance to our artists, culture bearers, activists, and larger community, this motion limits the future expansions and attainable possibilities of Ashe during a time of aggressive displacement of historic residents in the businesses of Central City, including pathways for low income residents to co-invest in real estate projects together is some of the upcoming projects of Ashe, including pilot investments on O C Haley and Felicity. We firmly believe in restrictions on attempts to exploit and disrupt Central City's affordability and accessibility for its historic residents, but not on organizations such as Ashe and others intentional about empowerment and cooperative economics within our community, made possible through our continued growth and expansion. We respectfully request that the council draws back this motion and reevaluates a plan that reflects all implications for the area and includes community input from affected residents and resident organizations, including Ashe. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Thompson?
Good afternoon. I'm Constance Thompson. I'm also standing here to you today on behalf of Ashe Cultural Arts Center. And I'm not about to reword or lift up anything else other than what the people who have spoken previously before me have said. I would just yield the rest of my time to ask, when is the study being done? Who is the study being done by? And when will somebody speak to those on the Boulevard, the corridor, and the surrounding areas to address? Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Walker?
Hi, good afternoon. Jessica Walker, 1818 Chestnut Street. I'm here today to oppose the motion and to ask that you do not vote to waive the M P P requirement. The M P P is in place for land use actions to provide notification of any proposed land use action affecting a neighborhood and to provide the opportunity for meaningful neighborhood review of any comment on such proposals. City councils should really set the gold standard for these meetings. We should have these meetings in place in the neighborhoods and times and locations where everyone can access and get to the meetings. Not everyone can come to these meetings during the workday. Additionally, a comment on the proposed zoning change. Currently, there is mixed use zoning on every block once you cross underneath the Pontchartrain Expressway between Claiborne and the river. That is a minimum of one block on every street, but in most cases, at least four or more blocks as you go down. And in some cases, it's much more like along the River District. I really don't want this particular neighborhood to get left behind when we have the River District coming online in the next few years in the Lower Garden District. And that's what I fear would happen here. In addition to that, the change in zoning would allow for less dense residential uses in this area. And if we're trying to create more housing, more affordable housing, this change in zoning would prevent that. So again, I just ask that you please don't waive the N P P requirement and hear from all the stakeholders.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Andrew Levin?
I'm Andy Levin. I live at 1210 South Rampart Street. I'm the only resident on the square. I am the only person who sleeps in his own house on that square. I've been there. I bought a house there five years ago. I'm a photographer, an artist, musician. I bought my place as it was mixed use with hopefully the future possibilities of doing things like opening a gallery or having a recording studio, things like that that wouldn't be prohibited under the proposed changes. For some reason, a red line was made around my property, which I think is unfortunate. Actually, I've emailed your land use person to talk about this and I'm glad to hear that there's no finality in this. But I do think that particular block, as close it is to the homeless camps, to the mission, to other areas, we need to get as much development in that area as we can. And I would envision more nightclubs, nightlife, art galleries, artistic space to bring more people into that area, especially at night. Because what we lack on Aretha Castle Haley, and I think the folks back there will agree, we don't have any night traffic and we want that. And we had the market, the jazz market, which unfortunately failed for reasons beyond our control. But the vision was to have a vibrant area and I think that we should all work towards that goal. I certainly have been very proud and very happy to live in this area. And I'm taking a lot of, I've taken more than my share of responsibility for making sure that the block is clean. As your own assistant, Matthew will probably tell you, I'm constantly talking to him about issues that we have. I think we can work together to make this work and I'm glad to hear that we're going to be having discussions going forward. And the more discussions we can possibly have, the better. I think the more neighbor input we have, the better job we'll be able to do.
Thank you. Ms. Weber?
Good afternoon, City Council, Nicole Weber, 2131 Beenville Street. I'm here on behalf of myself, actually. So this is an opportunity for us to make lemonade. I know there's a lot of opposition. We have the property owners and organizations in this area who are on one side. They feel like the council's on the other side. And to piggyback off of Andy Levin's comments, I would like this to be an opportunity for us to create real legislation that when executed will actually have an impact and will actually create incentives for development in this neighborhood. And I would hope that Councilmember Harris, that this is what you had in mind, although on paper, it sounds like a terrible motion, but I think this can really be an opportunity. I was just saying, I would like to make lemonade out of this situation because I feel like maybe everyone feels on one side or the other and there's a lot of gray area. I would like to be able to participate in this. I have a lot of ideas coming from being on city council and working with the city council members and now being on the development side and seeing what actually works and what actually can be put in place. So let's make this an opportunity to create real incentives, to create an area where we can show the rest of the city, things can be done administratively when we talk about affordable housing. We don't have to go through a year and a half of zoning process. Affordable housing isn't affordable to build. So let's use this to create real legislation and make things happen. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Weber. I know there's two online comments and then there are questions in the dials.
We now just have one because someone was in person. Mr. Bruno was in person. So this is from Samuel Worth. Samuel says, I'm extremely opposed to this motion, which will change the neighborhood from commercial mixed use zoning to residential zoning. Aretha Castle Haley Boulevard has been a retail corridor for 150 years and the surrounding neighborhood has always been mixed use. Over the last few years, the neighborhood has welcomed many local businesses, including restaurants such as Central City Barbecue, Cafe Reconcile, Masa Rapas, and Cafe Porch bars, such as Treehouse and Rabbit Hole, a distillery, a brewery, and a coffee shop, Neon Light Store. Beyond these establishments, the neighborhood is home to a variety of office users, nonprofits, a bank, and residences. I've invested in this neighborhood for many years and have done so because of its mixed use zoning. I built a new construction building on land that has been vacant for many decades. And more recently, I purchased land with plans to develop it into retail use. The land I purchased was priced according to its mixed use zoning that allows for retail uses. The proposed zoning change would both stop my project, which I have already spent a considerable amount of time, effort, and money on and caused me to be underwater on my loan. The city has been very clear that this neighborhood is a commercial mixed use neighborhood, both in the master plan and future land use map and in its actions of renovating the Boulevard. This proposed zoning change seemingly came out of nowhere and it would pull the rug out from under me. I respectfully ask the council to withdraw this motion and the original motion to downsize this neighborhood from commercial mixed use to residential.
Thank you. Councilmember Thomas?
Thank you, Councilmember. Just to maybe add some history to what I know you're trying to do is, first of all, thank you for tackling this issue. It's always been a busy area, even from the time when my mom and father were active at the Dryads YMCA and would go from all the way downtown to uptown. And when you talk about retail merchants and African American Jewish retail relationships, it was probably the foundation, other than some of the stuff that happened on Rampart and Barone Street in our city. And then the other thing in the mid 90s was the study that the Morello administration did with the rendering from Hewitt and Washington, which actually depicted that area as an area of mixed use and retail growth. So then after that, the investment in the Handelman Building, Ashe, and the other investments, some of the people who have here. So I think you have an opportunity, while you're trying to protect the other stuff, to actually do something magical. And I think the good thing about this is with this coming up, I think it brings back attention to kind of start to complete what some of those older visions were, to actually bring back what it was and mix what it is and what you guys see that it can be. And for the people out in the audience, so thank God for you guys, because you guys have actually really held on to keeping the tradition and what folk thought it wanted to be alive. And with the protections that you're trying to do, Councilmember Harris, I think it's a perfect opportunity, like Nicole just said, and to actually keep this going and get on it and make it what was intended to be from when it was the city of Magnolia. People forget that. It was its own separate community where working class people from the river and teachers and retailers actually were, to what I think you guys envisioned it to be because of your investment and the work there. So it's actually a good thing. And I want to thank you because it kind of continues some of the stuff old folk like me did with some of those old studies and plans. Appreciate you.
Thank you, Councilmember Thomas. Look, this is not an attempt to take away the commercial nature of a historic commercial area of our city, one that I hope, as Councilmember Thomas said, can be more fully revitalized. What this really does is study the residential mix and make sure that, again, we're not in the situation that we've seen, that we've had to include the I Z D on. However, given the public outcry, what I'm going to do right now is withdraw the N P P portion of it so that there can be full sum public input in how we draw and imagine what that area can be. This in no way, this in no way throws support for what has happened in the area in the Brown's area. But what this does is allow public input to reimagine again what this area, an area that's beloved to me, can be in the future. So I'll withdraw the motion. I don't know how to do that, Madam Clerk. I think I just say withdraw. Thank you.
So ordered.
We have resolution R 2378 by Councilmember Moreno. Urgent continued collaboration to bring rapid DNA to the Orleans Justice Center.
All right, thank you, Madam Clerk. Members, as I told you before, I was initially going to take this in a couple of weeks, but I decided to take it now due to kind of the way that this is now moving much faster than I had expected. And we all know that this city council is urgently working on solutions to the violence that is occurring in the city and really solutions to come up with great public safety initiatives to make our community safer. So this is what we're looking at. The state police is deploying rapid DNA technology to four different parishes and they are going to put this DNA technology in their intake, their jails. And so what this means is that right now, required by law, anyone who is arrested for felony has to get a DNA swab. That DNA swab is then sent to a DNA lab. So unfortunately, right now, it's taking us many weeks to find out that we have a potential suspect for an unsolved crime that has been arrested and in custody. And by the time N O P D gets those results back, usually that person is now out of custody and it takes time to try and find them again. If we are chosen to receive this technology by the Louisiana State Police, if we become one of those parishes, that technology would allow us to have those results in 90 minutes, 90 minutes, not several weeks. So that means that if we get a match for a potential unsolved crime, now N O P D can take immediate action while that suspect is still in custody. So what's happening is that N O P D, along with O P S O, along with myself, along with the C A O, we've all been working in collaboration to figure out like, how do we really show the state police and state police crime lab that we are committed to having this technology here and that we really want it? So that's why I decided to bring this resolution to show how the city council is also unanimously in support of bringing this crime fighting tool to New Orleans, because I believe that it could be a really complete game changer. What's also critical here is that if New Orleans is chosen, state police already has a grant to provide us with this equipment and they will also train O P S O. So all of it would just be amazing for us. And now we just need to be chosen. So what the resolution says, it calls for continued collaboration to try to bring this technology to New Orleans. And then the other piece to it, it requests the Louisiana State Police Crime Lab to give us high consideration as they look to select the next parish that will receive this. So that is what this resolution does. I'm happy to take any questions. I know that it's a little bit of a complicated matter, but like I said, happy to take any questions. Councilmember Green?
Well, it might be a little bit of a complicated matter, but it's another tool that law enforcement can use to help to reduce the number of crimes and also persons suspected of crimes who are on our streets. It's also important to recognize that sometimes technology helps with fairness, because it's not fair that someone has to stay, for example, in a particular form of incarceration and then find out months later that the DNA didn't match. But at the end of the day, it's good to have this sort of technology and it emphasizes that these tools, when utilized correctly, could have a positive effect on the reduction of crime in our city and making our citizens safer. So any speed that is offered with regards to the release of DNA information is a good thing on both sides, both protecting the potential suspect and also both protecting our citizens from crime for those who should be incarcerated. So I look forward to the work that is going to be taking place behind. So I look forward to the work that is going to be taking place behind the scenes to make this happen. And I do want to say to the bad guys, I mean, we're trying to do a lot on this city council to make our city safer. This is yet another tool, along with facial recognition, along with license plate reading and other technologies that we're going to utilize to bring greater safety to our citizens. And I look forward to this application being available to our OJC and to our citizens to help make them safe.
Yeah, exactly. Okay, so, right, right, right. You're the hype man. You're the hype man for sure. So I'll say this. So the next steps that are happening is myself, the CAO, OPSO and NOPD, a delegation. We've been invited to Louisiana State Police Crime Lab next week, and I want to bring this resolution with me. So that's why I'm asking for it to be passed today. Obviously, there's no public comment on it since we were just moving it now, but I'll make a motion to adopt if there's no more questions. Seconded by Councilmember Thomas. Fix yays, no nays. I appreciate it, y'all.
At the bottom of the page, we have Resolution R 2381 by Councilmember Morell, a resolution in support of the Civil Service Department reinstituting the promotional test for the rank of major in the police department.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Members, many of you may recall from our last hearing where we had Chief Woodfork. The NOPD currently is an organization that merits and gives pay based upon rank. Many of the complaints, the top complaint we got in every exit survey was the lack of opportunities for promotion as well as the lack of promotional opportunities. The challenge is, as a department, as a rank structure that goes from sergeant to lieutenant to captain, the next rank above that is major. Excuse me, ladies and gentlemen, ladies and gentlemen, we're still having a council meeting right now and your items are not on the agenda. If you'd like to talk, please take it outside. Thank you. All right. We're just trying to get out here, ladies and gentlemen. So we have, we have a significantly large department when it comes to rank. And by the sheer number of captains we have, by definition, we should have six majors. We have one major who's on the borderline of retirement. By simply allowing and requesting civil service to have the major exam, that would allow for promotional opportunities for those individuals who are currently serving in the captain position to be eligible to go to major and to create additional promotional opportunities throughout rank. Furthermore, it would allow for better allocation of our resources and services. Resolution seeks to get civil service to once again offer the major rank test. That's what it does. Are there any comment cards or questions? Hearing none, I will move to the quorum. Okay, I will move. All right, please vote your machines. Fix yays, no nays. The motion is adopted. Madam Clerk, first read.
No, we have a motion under suspension. We have Motion M 2383 by Councilmembers Jeruso and Thomas by request, authorizing that the president of the council shall be added as a signatory to the contract between the City of New Orleans and On Services LLC and that the president of the council is authorized to sign the professional service agreement between the City of New Orleans and On Services LLC as attached here to as Exhibit A. We need to suspend the rules to receive this motion.
So moved. Seconded by President Morell. I'm going to say we have five yays. All right, so now.
Now we need to vote to add it.
So I will move to add, seconded by Councilmember King. Five yays, no nays to add. Now we need to move, spend.
No, now you just need to vote on it.
Madam Clerk, I think I have to move.
Oh, seven, I'm sorry. You're right.
You're going to pay for that later, dude.
I'm just, I'm just trying to get it right. From motion to suspend. Seven seconds. Seconded by Council President. All in favor? Seven yays. All right.
Can you add my name?
I will. I will add. Councilmember Moreno wants to be added. Add everybody to this. Move, move for approval.
Point of personal privilege before we adjourn, Mr. Chair.
Wait, wait.
We got, we got, wait, wait, we got to move. I move for approval on the motion. Seconded by Councilmember Harris. All in favor? Seven yays, no nays.
Point of personal privilege, Mr. President. Okay. Thank y'all for continuing to meet when I was late this morning. The Secretary of Fudge, Congressman Carter, the mayor in Washington officials actually presented in the Lord Ninth War today that they would forgive all of those road home loans that people had, that the federal government was actually coming back to people saying, we want our money, many of which had used to help rehabilitate their homes and fill in the gaps because there wasn't enough to repair. So today was the day that they announced, and I know all of our council members would have been there if not for the meeting, that those loans will be forgiven and the road home has finally ended. So it was a great day this morning.
First read.
Okay, we need to suspend the rules to go to first reading.
Ordinance on first readings, ordinance calendar number 34,064 by Councilmember King, and ordinance to effect the zoning change from an SRS suburban single-family residential district to an SRD suburban two-family residential district located in the residential short-term rental interim zoning district on square 277 lot 13 through 20 in the 5th Municipal District bounded by Bennett Street, Henderson Street, Adrian Street and Mimusa Street, Mimusa Avenue. Municipal address 3678 Bennett Street and otherwise to provide respect there to zoning dock is 9322. Ordinance calendar 34,065 by Councilmember King, and ordinance to amend and re-ordain Article 19 of the Comprehensive Zoning Ordinance, ordinance number 4264 MCS as amended by ordinance number 26413 MCS and subsequent amendments to establish a new interim zoning district. IZD code, the lower elders rural protection interim zoning district, the intent of which is to temporarily prohibit the development of multifamily residence in an SRM1 multifamily residential district and commercial development in SB2 pedestrian-oriented corridor business district to allow for appropriate impact studies regarding drainage, road and utility infrastructure, municipal service for fire, police, emergency response services and other public safety considerations and environment impact analysis in the area generally bonded by the inner coastal waterway, the Mississippi River, the Donna Canal, Delacrosse Road and otherwise to provide respect there to zoning dock at 9822. Ordinance calendar 34,066 by Councilmember King, and ordinance to effect the zoning change from an HURM2 historic urban multifamily residential district to an HUMU historic urban neighborhood mixed-use district located in the residential short-term rental interim zoning district, the small multifamily affordable short-term rental interim zoning district on square 124, lots 1, 2, 2 or an undesignated lot and 5D in the 2nd Municipal District bounded by Abbeville Street, Cortez Street, Benville Street and Basin Street. Municipal address 235 through 237 Basin Street and 1208 through 1216 Benville Street and otherwise to provide respect there to zoning dock at 9922. Ordinance calendar 34,067 by Councilmember Green, and ordinance to establish a conditional use to permit the retail sales of packaged alcohol beverages in the SB2 suburban pedestrian-oriented corridor business district, enhanced corridor district design overlay district, residential short-term rental interim zoning district and the recession of ordinance number 26413 MCS zoning dock at 9219 on square 4056, lots 1, 2, 3 and 4 in the 3rd Municipal District bounded by Fillmore Avenue, Marion Street, Mithra Street, Elysian Fields Avenue. Municipal address 2221 Fillmore Avenue and 5300 Moraine Street and otherwise to provide respect there to zoning dock at 423. Ordinance calendar 34,068 by Councilmember Green, and ordinance to rename the entirety of Higgins Boulevard running between Elmenes and Elva Street to Culver Ramsway and otherwise to provide respect there too. Ordinance calendar 34,069 by Councilmember Harris, and ordinance authorizing the execution of a cooperative endeavor agreement by and among the City of New Orleans, State of Louisiana, Board Broad Street, Sports Entertainment and Dining Economic Development District, State of Louisiana and 504 Gulf LLC related to the collection use and expenditure of a 2% sales and use tax to be levied in said district and otherwise to provide respect there too. Ordinance calendar 34,070 by Councilmembers Jeruso, Morell, Moreno, Harris, King, Green and Thomas, and ordinance to amend Section 154-534 of the Code of the City of New Orleans to require operable flashlights in old school zones and existing flashlights and otherwise to provide respect there too. Ordinance calendar 34,071 by Councilmember Jeruso, and ordinance calling an election on October 14 at which the electors of the City of New Orleans shall be asked to approve an amendment to Section 6-102 of the Home Room Charter requiring the submission of the operating budget and the proposed revenue and operating budget ordinances be submitted to the council no later than the 1st day of October in amendment to Section 61-6-104 of the Home Room Charter requiring the City Planning Commission to annually prepare and submit to the mayor a capital program no later than the 15th day of September in an amendment to Section 6-104 of the Home Room Charter requiring the mayor to submit to the council the capital program as prepared by the City Planning Commission, the capital budget message into the proposed capital budget ordinance no later than the 1st day of October and otherwise to provide respect there too. Ordinance calendar 34,072 by Councilmember Jeruso, and ordinance calling an election on October 14, 2023 at which the electors of the City of New Orleans shall be asked to approve an amendment to the Home Room Charter to establish the Department of Code Enforcement reassignment duties, certain duties to the Department of Safety and Permits and Sanitation Department of Code Enforcement and otherwise to provide respect there too. Ordinance calendar 34,073 by Councilmember Jeruso by request, and ordinance authorizing the mayor of the City of New Orleans to enter into a cooperative endeavor agreement between the City of New Orleans and the State of Louisiana office of facility planning and control to allow and facilitate the planning and construction of the expansion of the Monticello Canal covert on at Ellyn Highway and more fully set forth in a cooperative endeavor agreement form attached here to as Exhibit A and may part hereof and otherwise to provide respect there too. Ordinance calendar 34,074 by Councilmembers Green, Harris and King by request, and ordinance to authorize the mayor of the City of New Orleans to enter into an amendment number two to a previously executed cooperative endeavor agreement between the City of New Orleans and the Odyssey House, Louisiana, Inc. to accomplish the valuable public purpose of providing a safe location for intoxicated persons to be brought to recovery to a sober state, the Sobering Center to extend the term of the CAA for four years as more fully set forth in Amendment Number Two form attached here to as Exhibit One and may part hereof to add the president of the City Council of New Orleans as a signatory to the amendment and authorize the president to sign the amendment and otherwise to provide respect there too. Ordinance calendar number 34,075 by Councilmember King by request, and ordinance to amend, ordinance to authorize the mayor of the City of New Orleans to enter into an amendment number one to a previously executed cooperative endeavor agreement between the City of New Orleans and New Orleans for a term of one year for the public purpose of recovering and rebuilding the City of New Orleans through strategic management and deposition of properties transferred to the city by the Louisiana Land Trust as more fully detailed in Amendment Number One to the Cooperative Endeavor Agreement attached here to as Exhibit One and may part hereof and otherwise to provide respect there too. Ordinance calendar 34,076 by Councilmember Jeruso, Moreno, Green and Thomas by request, and ordinance to amend Ordinance Number 29265 MCS as amended entitled and ordinance providing the operating budget of revenues for the City of New Orleans for the year 2023 to appropriate funds received under the American Rescue Plan Act to the mayor to fund the construction of resilience hubs at the households of faith in Orleans Parish and otherwise to provide respect there too. Ordinance calendar 34,077 by Councilmember Jeruso, Moreno, Green and Thomas by request, and ordinance to amend Ordinance Number 29266 MCS as amended entitled and ordinance providing an operating budget of expenditures for the City of New Orleans for the year 2023 to appropriate funds received under the American Rescue Plan Act to the mayor to fund the construction of resilience hubs at households of faith in Orleans Parish and otherwise to provide respect there too. Ordinance calendar number 34,078 by Councilmembers Jeruso, Moreno, Green and Thomas by request, and ordinance to amend Ordinance Number 29266 MCS as amended entitled and ordinance providing the operating budget of expenditures for the City of New Orleans for the year 2023 to transfer funds awarded to the Cooperation for National and Community Service to the Mayor's Office American Corps Vista Program and otherwise to provide respect there too. Ordinance calendar number 34,079 by Councilmembers Jeruso, Moreno, Green and Thomas by request, and ordinance to amend Ordinance Number 29265 MCS as amended entitled and ordinance providing the operating budget of revenues for the City of New Orleans for the year 2023 to appropriate grant funds to cover payroll expenses incurred during the grant period of January 26, 2021 through September 30 of 2022 and otherwise to provide respect there too. Ordinance calendar 34,080 by Councilmembers Jeruso, Moreno, Green and Thomas by request, and ordinance to amend Ordinance Number 29266 MCS as amended entitled and ordinance providing the operating budget of expenditures for the City of New Orleans for the year 2023 to appropriate grant funds to cover payroll expenses incurred during the grant period of January 26, 2021 through September 30 of 2022 and provide with respect there too. Ordinance calendar 34,081 by Councilmember Moreno by request, and ordinance to authorize the mayor of the City of New Orleans to enter into an amendment number one to a previously executed cooperative endeavor agreement between the City of New Orleans and the New Orleans Family Justice Center relative to the Advocacy Initiated Response Program to modify the provisions thereof and extend to a term thereof for an additional one year as more fully set forth in Amendment Number One form attached here to as Exhibit One and may part hereof and otherwise to provide respect there too. This completes ordinance on first read.
It's been moved and seconded.